I'd like to record and call the September 8th meeting of the Rehnsord City Council. The order.
Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Hallman.
Here.
Mr. Fryling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
First order of business for today is the council minutes from the meetings of August 8th and August 11th and the August 27th retreat of City Council. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Harry Nienhoff take a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, with the approval of the minutes of August 8th, 11th, and 27th.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Hi.
Mr. Pons.
Hi.
Mayor Hallman.
Hi.
Mr. Fryling.
Hi.
Mr. Foster.
Next order of business is matters of special privilege, and I believe we have none today. Is that correct? I believe so. That moves us to public hearings. Today, we have three public hearings. I'm going to make a change in the agenda. We'll have the first two public hearings, and then we're going to move the first of the city manager reports financing the quarter path at Williamsburg core infrastructure to follow those first two public hearings, and then we'll go back to public hearings, number three, with the local adoption of regional water supply. We have people here from the developer and from Riverside that we don't want to keep here forever. So, we'll do that if that's okay with council. Is that okay? Okay. The first public hearing is PCR 11-08, which is an amendment of zoning regulations pertaining to rental bedrooms to roomers in owner-occupied, single-family detached dwellings. This is proposed ordinance 11-14A and 11-14B. Mr. Nestor.
I'll briefly go over some highlights on this issue. What you see on the slide is a timeline of the consideration of this proposal, which began back in March of this year. Council counting the meeting today will have considered this for four meetings. Planning Commission considered this for six meetings, including two public hearings.
Would you go back to that just a second? This process of council sending something to Planning Commission for consideration, that's the normal process of public discussion for a zoning change. Is that correct?
Some -- council can send it back, yes.
But sort of the process of council discussion, then Planning Commission debate their recommendation, and then council consideration?
Yes.
Okay.
These are the -- I'm going to go over the three alternatives very briefly, and then talk about the differences in the existing and proposed parking regulations. Alternate one is no change to existing regulations. So, with this alternate, rental of one bedroom to one roomer is allowed by right. Rental of one or two bedrooms to two, three, or four roomers with no more than two per room requires special exception approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's been in our zoning ordinance since 1991. Alternate two created separate sections for bedroom rental to visitors, which covers bed and breakfast, and bedroom rentals to roomers. This clarifies the differences between the two. Rental of one bedroom to one roomer continues to be allowed by right. Rental of bedrooms to two roomers is allowed with administrative approval by the zoning administrator. Owner occupancy is redefined and does not allow corporate ownership for rental of rooms to roomers. Alternate three is the same as alternate number two, but it adds rental of bedrooms to three or four roomers with a special exception approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, that's similar to what is in our existing regulations in effect today, except our regulations now allow a maximum of two bedrooms to two roomers each to get your maximum of four, where the proposed alternate three could allow rental of four bedrooms to one roomer each. So, that's one of the differences between the two. Planning Commission considered all three of these options in its last public hearing on August 17th. The Commission decided first by a vote of seven-zero that alternate three was not acceptable. Planning Commission then recommended by a vote of four to three that no change be made to the existing regulations. That is alternate one. Now, I'd like to conclude my comments by talking about the differences in the parking regulations between what we have now and what is proposed. The existing requirements requires all parking to be off-street, so it has to be in your yard, has to be on paved driveways, parking space. It has to meet all the requirements, and there is a 30% coverage maximum in the front yard, for example. If you have more than five spaces, it needs to be hard-surfaced. For -- in our existing regulations, if you're renting to more than one roomer, which requires Board of Zoning Appeals approval as a special exception, you need one off-street parking space per roomer. So, if you rented to the maximum of four roomers, you would need four off-street parking spaces. For both alternate two and alternate three, parking can be either on the street, directly abutting the property, if you have the space and you need 18 feet of length per car, or it can be off-street, and you need one space. For alternate two, you need one space per bedroom plus two for the dwelling. So, if you rented one bedroom to two roomers, you would need one additional space. If you rented two bedrooms to two roomers, you would need two additional spaces. For alternate three, when you would be renting to three or four roomers, if you're renting separate bedrooms for each roomer, you would need one space per bedroom. If you're doubling up and renting two bedrooms to two roomers each for a total of four, you would need two additional off-street parking spaces. So, that's just a comparison with where we are now and what the proposed provisions are. And those are all the comments I have now, for now. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. We'll come to council for questions before we do the open hearing, or open the hearing. And Reed, I have a number of questions for you that I think might help clarify some of this. So, back to option one, which is what exists right now, and this has been in the zoning ordinance for 20 years.
Yes.
And that's the one by right and a limitation of two rooms, but up to four roomers, but anything over one would have to be BZA approval by special exception.
Correct.
And this only applies to owner-occupied, single-family detached dwellings?
Correct.
And it applies to those single-family detached dwellings wherever they are in the city?
Correct.
Okay. And if BZA were to approve two, three, or four, does that go with the owner of the property or with the property itself? This may be a question for Chris.
These have generally gone with the owner, and we have given council some language to clarify that in the event that council either passes alternate two or alternate three, that these special exceptions, special exception for alternate three, would go with the owner, not with the property. So, if there is a change in the property ownership, or the owner ceases to occupy the property, then the special exception would be void.
Okay. And how does the city know whether there's been a change in ownership or what have you?
There is no other mechanism other than normal zoning enforcement.
I thought I read someplace that there had to be a certification of ownership.
There's a certification of ownership at the beginning of either administrative approval, and they would have to certify their ownership if they applied for a special exception. And then, if the special exception period is limited, or the administrative approval is limited for a period of time, if they wanted to do that after, they would have to come again and resubmit the applications.
So, there's not an annual certification of ownership?
No, not in the existing proposed ordinance.
Okay. Chris, this may be for you as well. How does the BZA special exception interact with the three, four-person rule? Are these two separate entities, or how do you think about that, or how should we think about that?
The special exception process is just a special exception. It is an exception to the general zoning. The general zoning allows three unrelated people to reside in a property, or a family to reside in a property. If a special exception is granted, then that would supersede general zoning.
Right. So, there's no conflict there because of the nature?
No.
Okay. If someone makes an application to BZA for either two, three, or four roomers, what type of notice is given to -- about that process?
Test that one.
Yeah. All sorts of notifications that are given. You get a notification of the public notice in the meeting if you signed up on our website for e-notify. We put one of our green zoning signs up on the property to identify it. We send out -- we send by mail notices to adjoining property owners and those directly across the street. We advertise it two times in the Virginia Gazette prior to the meeting.
Yeah. Thank you. I think you've talked about the parking and the requirement of -- under the existing regulation of one off-street parking per roomer. What if a property has a legal non-conforming use? Let's say I have a house, and I want to have roomers, but I also have a garage apartment in the back that's, you know, legal garage apartment. What's the relationship between those two separate things? Does that limit my ability to rent to roomers?
They are two separate things.
Two separate. What about if I had a basement apartment rather than a garage apartment? Is that the same?
That would be the same.
Created the same. When an application is made to the Board of Zoning Appeal, BZA, what criteria or what can they consider in their -- in making a determination of whether to approve this or not to approve this? Chris, you may be.
Well, in addition to those things that are specific to the special exception that we're dealing with, so in this case, it would be what the conditions are for rooms to roomers, the city code also provides that BZA can look at a number of things. So, they look at the stated intent of the zoning district in which the property is located, the amount of area immediately surrounding the property in question, the amount of traffic generated, the number of people who would be employed if the special exception were granted, any hardships that would result if the BZA denied the special exception, and then whatever the specific criteria is. They're also -- they are also required to find that it's -- that whatever the special exception, if it's construction, it's designed or constructed, or it's operated with safeguards for the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants of the adjoining property and the surrounding property, that it doesn't reasonably impair an adequate supply of light and air to the adjacent property, that it does not increase public danger from fire, or otherwise reasonably restrict public safety, and it does not impair the established property values in the surrounding areas. So, those are all things that the BZA is permitted to look at in every special exception that they consider.
Okay. So, they have a great deal of latitude in what to consider.
They do.
Does the current ordinance provide a limit to the length of time of the special exception?
No.
It does not?
The proposed ordinance also does not, and Reed and I have worked on language for council to consider that would specifically limit, but BZA in a special exception has the ability to limit the amount of time that a special exception is valid for.
Okay. So, while the current ordinance does not have a limitation, BZA in their determination could put a limit on it, and council could create a limit if we so desired in the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. The city has a rental inspection program. Could the city specify an inspection for applicants for roomers?
The rental inspection statute specifically provides that we cannot perform rental inspections on owner-occupied properties. So, insofar as rental inspection is concerned, no, we could not include that.
Okay. Could BZA make that a condition of their?
It is likely that would violate the Dillon Rule because there is a specific provision in the state code that provides that we cannot do owner-occupied inspections in rental inspection context. There is nothing specific in the code that says whether or not inspections can be provided as part of this BZA zoning process. I think if we had to weigh that, it would not come down in favor of the BZA having the authority to do that.
Okay. Could other conditions be specified in the ordinance? What's the framework for thinking about other conditions?
Conditions must be reasonable. They can be imposed as part of a special exception process. What's reasonable depends on what the state code allows currently. There are specific conditions, for example, if alcoholic beverages are going to be served, there are special conditions that can be attached to a special exception process for those. Again, the code is silent on what those conditions can be, but they must be reasonable as to the special exception that's being considered.
And reasonable is in relation to the zoning district and?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Reed, in the last 20 years, how many applications have been made to BZA for special exceptions?
Five.
Five. Could you tell us a little bit about those five?
Yes. The first one we had, we actually had the ordinance for almost 11 years before we had the first request. In 2002, there was a request at 333 Burns Lane to rent two bedrooms to a total of two roomers. That was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals. In December of 2005, there was a request at 2 Coal Lane to rent two bedrooms to a total of two roomers. That was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. In September of 2006, there was a request at 349 Scotland Street, the corner of Henry and Scotland, to rent two bedrooms to four roomers. That was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals. In October of 2009, there was a request to rent one bedroom to two roomers at 123 Matoka Court. That was approved with conditions by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And in February of this year, there was a request to rent two bedrooms to four roomers at 123 Matoka Court, which would have replaced the one I just mentioned. That was approved by -- approved with conditions by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So, there've been two for four, two roomers, one denied, and two approved, and two for four roomers, one approved and one denied?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And option two, I have some -- a couple of questions, too. The alternate two, instead of compared to the current ordinance, does not allow a third or fourth roomer. Is that correct?
Correct. Two is the maximum.
Two is the maximum, but the second is by administrative approval?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's no limitation to that in the proposed, but just as with the existing ordinance, council could impose a limitation on that. Is that correct?
There could be -- there could, for administrative approval, if there were to be a time limitation, that would need to be written into the ordinance.
The ordinance, yeah. And council could do that if it so desired?
That's correct.
Okay. I think you've talked about the parking changes, and this changes to -- from what currently exists, all the parking spaces have to be on-site, to parking spaces could be on the street in front of the house as well as on-site.
That's correct.
And it changes the numbers that you've talked about. Okay. Could you tell -- and this, Chris, this may be for you. This seems to me to clarify the definition of owner occupancy in a way that is useful. Could you tell us a little bit about sort of how that clarifies?
In the previous, we're in the existing ordinance, owner occupancy is defined, and Reed, you can help me with this if you would, as the person who owns the property residing in the property, they have to own 51% interest in the property, and there can be corporate ownership of the property. And this was for visitors and roomers, and so B&Bs fit into that definition as well, which is why that's part of the definition.
Excuse me, Mayor. I beg your pardon, but could the city attorney maybe move her mic a little closer? We're not even here in the back.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
In the proposed ordinance, we've separated out visitors and roomers, so there are two separate categories. And so, as we have defined owner, the person has to own the fee simple interest in the house. They have to own at least 51% of the fee simple interest in the house, or a person in a family, a family can reside in the house, and someone in the family has to own 51% interest. And we have specifically accepted corporate ownership or ownership by a business entity for purposes of roomers, with the intent being that that is inconsistent with renting roomers to room -- rooms to roomers in owner-occupied properties.
Okay. So, as I understand it, the changes that you've made here really have two parts to it. One, maybe clarifying the definition of owner occupancy and separating the definition of rental of rooms to roomers from rental of rooms to visitors.
That's correct.
Okay. And, okay. Now, in option three, which essentially is option two with the possibility of three or four by BZA approval, that differs from what exists now in what ways? The approval process?
Well, the approval process in applying to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception is the same in both instances. Of course, right now, you need BZA approval for two, but if you're talking about to have three or four roomers under what we have now and under what's proposed in alternate three, you have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They have to hold a public hearing with all the appropriate public notices.
And the change is in dealing with the second roomer, and that would be by administrative approval?
That would be by administrative approval. Yes, that's part of alternate three also.
Also.
So, that is a more streamlined process than we have today.
Okay. And you've talked again about how parking differs between these two. How does the number of rooms that can be used for roomers differ between this and what exists now?
What exists now has -- there are a maximum of two bedrooms that can be rented. Under the proposal, there is no maximum on the number of bedrooms that can be rented. There's a max -- if you rent two, three, or four, there's a maximum of two people in a bedroom. So, under alternate three, you could conceivably rent four bedrooms to one person each for a total of four, whereas under our existing regulations, to get your total of four, you would have to have two people each in two bedrooms.
Okay. That helps. And this option also picks up the clarification of owner occupancy and clarifies the distinction between renting rooms to renters versus renting rooms to visitors?
Yes, it does.
That's all, that's continued?
Yes.
Okay. Again, does this option have any length of time to the approval, either the administrative approval or the BZA approval?
There is no option in the ordinance that was presented. It would be possible to add that for both administrative approval and Board of Zoning Appeals.
So, just as we could with what exists now, add a limitation on the time period. We could do that for both the administrative approval and the BZA approval in the ordinance?
In the ordinance, correct.
Okay. Okay. I think that answers most of my questions. We'll go to council. Mr. Fryling?
I think I may actually have one or two more, as much as it surprises me. Chris, this is, I think this question's for you. Can you clarify that, I believe it was the July meeting, Planning Commission voted and made a recommendation, and then council asked Planning Commission to hold another public hearing. They did in August. They voted twice. The end result of that, making a different recommendation. Did that second recommendation then override the first recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's the case. And this could be for either of you. It seems, from what Reed has presented and from the mayor's questioning, that when we're talking specifically about the approval process, the primary difference between option one and option three is the second roomer. And it's in option three, it's changing it from a BZA special exception approval to administrative approval.
That's correct.
My understanding is that the thought there was that that might streamline a process without creating greater hardship or interfering with the single-family nature of the neighborhood. Could one of you describe what it is about the BZA special exception approval process that makes it more cumbersome or less desirable for an applicant?
With administrative approval, let me talk about that first. You would come in and make your application, provide the information that is specified in the ordinance. The zoning administrator would check it out. If it meets all the requirements, you would receive your administrative approval. So, you meet the requirements, you receive the approval.
You meet the requirement?
You meet the requirements, and you receive your approval for the administrative part of it. Now, for Board of Zoning Appeals approval, that is discretionary on the part of the Board of Zoning Appeals. You make your application. The meeting is scheduled. There is a public hearing held, and then the Board of Zoning Appeals makes their decision. So, it's a longer period of time to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. There are notifications and public hearing, and then a decision.
Give me a rough idea of what the time difference would be with the BZA special exception approval?
You're probably talking about four or five weeks, depending on when you get your application in for Board of Zoning Appeals approval. For administrative approval, depending on whether you not, you have all the information together, that could go through the process in a week. It could take a couple of weeks. It just depends if there's anything that needs to be clarified when the application is submitted.
And is there a cost involved with either?
There is no cost specified for administrative approval, and there is a cost for Board of Zoning Appeals.
Which is?
I think it is $300.
And that's to cover the city's?
Advertising costs.
Cost of advertising.
And there's no way around that?
No.
The mayor asked a question earlier. The mayor asked a question earlier, actually more than one. He asked a question earlier about the zoning changes and the definition of family and the special exceptions, and how those all interrelated. Whatever zoning the city has in place, that can be overridden even further by a homeowners' association?
The homeowners' association have rules that the homeowner is responsible for. They're deeded, so there are restrictions that are in place. The homeowner is obligated to follow those restrictions, but those are not restrictions that the city would enforce. Those are restrictions the homeowners' association would enforce. If the city's zoning changes to allow something that the homeowners' association restrictions don't allow, it doesn't affect the homeowners' association restrictions unless they're in some way tied to the zoning ordinance.
Mayor also asked a question about, how do we know when a property changes hands? If it's already been approved for the rumor or any situation? That has to be recorded on a deed.
It does, and we have a very good tax assessment office, and those folks regularly research the records in the courthouse for changes of that nature. So we would know that for purposes of our tax records. It would be incumbent upon the zoning administrator or someone else in the planning department to keep track of that.
Do we have any idea how many homes in the city currently rent rooms to roomers?
No.
All park?
Anyone can rent one room to one rumor, and there's no way the city does or can track that.
Any kind of special approval?
I think Reed said?
Well, the special, the special approval, we have, we have approved, we have essentially two, two approved residences in the city, one on Coal Lane for two roomers, and one on Matoka Court for up to four roomers.
So nobody's been renting rooms to roomers more, to more than one person that we know of prior to the zoning changing?
Only the property at Matoka Court, and they currently have a special exception that was approved.
No, I mean prior to the 1991?
Ninety-one.
No, I don't know of any.
Okay. So we're talking about basically two situations. How, and let's say there was a change, or let's say more people started opting for, even if we kept it the same, and more people started seeking BZA special exception. How onerous a task would it be on staff to periodically, every one year, every two years, just check the deeds or the recorded, what we have recorded in the tax assessment system of those people who've received that special approval?
Well, since there's only two, it shouldn't be very onerous.
Might suggest that that be something we consider as part of whatever we do today. These two questions build a little bit, or maybe, they're similar to questions the mayor asked, but I just wanted to clarify something. In the situation as it exists currently, which would be the case if we went with alternate one, no change to the existing zoning, a couple or a family living in a home could only rent to one person without going to the BZA for special exception approval.
That's right.
And paying that $300 to go through the process.
Yes.
If an individual lived in the home, whether that individual owned the home or was a renter, they could rent to two people.
That's right.
Without getting any approval from anybody.
That's right.
And it's perfectly acceptable. So because the one owner is a couple, or one other entity residing in the home is a couple, it's more difficult for them than it is for a single person.
Yes.
If the home is owned by a corporate entity under the current guidelines, and there's one person residing in the home, they can also rent to two people?
If they own 51% of the corporate ownership, then yes, they can.
Okay. I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Frye. Scott?
Reed, and maybe pose this to some, some folks that have been in Williamsburg a lot longer than I have. Can you give us the historical use of this type of housing? You know, throughout all our neighborhoods? Meaning, this is not a new thing, and we, it's only been on the books for so long that there has been an approval process. I think Doug has had some experience with this on college terrace. Clyde, I'm sure you know of some. This has been going on for a long time. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, renting, renting, I would say renting rooms to roomers has been going on for a long time.
Right, right. It's not a new thing in a college town. I, through conversations, I've heard many examples of this, where it's been successful in the past, especially with houses close to the neighborhoods. Under option three, can you explain to me, Reed, how, what the BZA's options are as far as customizing parking or, or the screening of parking for an individual application?
Under the current regulations, there is, there is a parking requirement that, I mean, it's not optional, you need X amount of parking spaces, that specified in the ordinance. You need to have screening for the parking spaces, that is specified in the ordinance that we have right now. And now, in alternate three, there are parking requirements. They're a little different than what we have right now, but those parking requirements aren't optional, they have to be met. There are no screening requirements in the proposed alternate three, although the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think as part of their review, would have the option to impose reasonable requirements, which could be screening if that was felt to be something that was needed per that particular case.
Very good, very good. Let's say a house is approved for a permit, and things aren't going well. What would be, what would be the process where a neighbor could lodge a complaint with the city? And how would, how would that factor on approval of a permit a second time? Is that clear?
There are revocation provisions for special exceptions. So if someone violated the conditions of the special exception granted by the BZA, and a complaint of that nature was received by the zoning administrator, the BZA could revoke that special exception. That's already in the city's code, so they can do that now for any special exception that they have. It could factor into the BZA's decision if there was a previous special exception to do the same thing that was revoked. There's no prohibition on the BZA considering any previous special exceptions that were revoked for failure to comply with those terms.
Got you, got you.
Doug?
Thank you. Just a little, little clarity. What's on the books today allows for up to four roomers in an owner occupied home.
Correct.
Under options, the other options today, what is the maximum of renters an owner could put in a home?
Alternate two, there is a maximum of two. That's two less than we can have under our existing regulations. Under alternate three, there is a maximum of four, which is the same as we have in our existing regulations.
So we're not talking about increasing housing numbers of available rooms in any, in this scenario?
No, it's no more than four existing or under alternate three.
Okay. Just a technical question for Ms. Shelton. In this, there's some language about ownership needing to be certified. What does that mean?
That means that an attorney in town certifies to the city, and they do essentially a title report showing that the person who is applying for the special exception is the record owner of the property.
Right. And, and he would go to the courthouse and find out who's?
He would research the title and determine if there have been any transfers of that property to any third party of any nature.
And is an attorney the only one that can?
That's the way that it's drafted in the code.
But it doesn't, we don't have to have?
We do not have to have an attorney certify that. We, we would, as it's drafted right now. So that would be part of the process. But that's not an obligation. Council could remove that.
Right. And same with title, title insurance or title certification? You don't need an attorney to do that?
A title company can do that.
Okay. Thank you. Judy?
Reed, I have a question about the parking. One of, one of the issues that I've heard a lot about is parking. Now, currently, you have to have one parking place per person, right?
Correct.
The one, one of the proposals is to have one parking place per room.
Correct.
However, we can decide to go back to one parking place per person, correct?
Yes, you can.
We have that option.
You do.
We also have the option to add the screening requirements.
You do.
About parking. Do we have an option to say you can't park on the street?
Yes, you could, you could say it has to be off-street parking entirely as it is now.
But can the, the homeowner can always park on the street, right?
The homeowner's?
I mean, I can park on the street in front of my house.
You can park, but if, if you have a house, right now, our parking requirement is two off-street parking spaces for a single-family dwelling. They can be side by side, or one behind the other. Most houses have two off-street parking spaces.
Right, yes.
So you would need to provide parking for the roomers in addition to the parking you have on your site for your own use. So if you had two parking spaces and you were renting to two roomers, you would have to have a total of four.
Four.
The current ordinance would say you have, you would have to have all four of those parking spaces off the street, on your property. There are certain provisions about what percentage of your front yard can be covered by parking and so forth. The proposed alternate two and alternate three would let you have count parking that's directly adjacent to your property toward meeting your parking requirement for roomers. You would need 18 feet of length per parking space. So if you had, if you had 40 feet of property frontage apart from your driveway, you could fit two cars in it, so that, under this proposal, that, with your two cars in the driveway, that would meet the four parking space requirement for two roomers. Under the proposed scenario, under our existing regulations, you would have to have a total of four off-street parking spaces on your lot.
So you've really got a choice of paving your front yard or having street parking. I guess for, for Chris, what, what options, say there was somebody that had two roomers, and one of the roomers persistently parked in front of somebody else's house, instead of in one of the approved parking spaces?
Those would simply be whatever the existing parking regulations provide.
Regulations are on that street? Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask one follow-up question to that?
Sure.
Regarding the four parking spaces, Mr. Nestor, can those, or I'm just using that number as an example, can those be satisfied by having two spaces in a garage and two spaces on an apron or driveway?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
One follow-up question also. What, what was staffs thinking in making the change from what exists now to, to the possibility of, of counting those contiguous on-street parking places?
This, this with the change we made earlier to allow administrative approval of four people rent, renting, living in a single-family dwelling. For that, we allowed counted parking spaces on the street. I think, so this is similar. I think the thought was that in looking at the character of a single-family area, that if there was on-street, on-the-street parking that was available, that would mean you wouldn't have to pave over more of your front yard to accommodate the parking, but it would have to be directly adjacent to your lot, not in front of someone else.
Thank, thank you very much. Any, any other questions for Reed before we go to the public hearing? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to the issue, which is the change in, in bedroom rentals to roomers to come forward. I have some speakers cards. We'll go through those, and then anyone who, else who wishes to speak may do so, and we'll make sure that opportunity exists. The first card I have is Danielle Waltrip.
Hello.
Who else?
Good afternoon. My name is Danielle Waltrip. I am the current undersecretary to Williamsburg for the William &amp; Mary Student Assembly. We believe that changing the existing regulations that pertain to bedroom rentals would benefit not only us, the students, but also the greater Williamsburg community. Graduate students, transfer students, and some upperclassmen are faced with the challenge of finding housing in Williamsburg. Currently, there are very few affordable housing options in the city. Sometimes it's not affordable for students to live in an apartment, a house, or a single bedroom. Providing options to the students and community members is vital. Also, by encouraging the rental of bedrooms in owner occupied homes, we can build community, improve relations between the Williamsburg community and the college, and dispel negative student stereotypes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker card I have is Stuart Godden. Again, if you, when you come forward, if you please state your name and address.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Stuart.
Stuart Godden, 715 Goodwin Street. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I can support the recommendation of the Planning Commission to make no change to the existing ordinance pertaining to the rental of bedrooms to roomers in owner occupied homes. Should council nevertheless wish to proceed with options two or three, I suggest improvements to the staff proposal. First, and I know there's been, it looks like there's some discussion, a movement that way, make administrative approvals valid for a set period of time, perhaps three or four years. As presently drafted, once you're granted, it's there forever, and that, no matter what happens. Two, I think some, it should be strengthened, if you're going that route, to, well, we've talked about change of ownership. Again, it seems like council's moving in the direction, should they go to option two, that if ownership changes, the administrative approval would automatically be revoked. If so, I would welcome that. Three, it seems to me there has to be some provision there to allow the zoning administrator to revoke a permit if the property should become a nuisance with respect to noise, parking, upkeep, or even criminal behavior. Right now, it's drafted, I don't know how, unless elsewhere in the code, the city could in fact revoke the rumor privileges. Hopefully, that would never come about, but it could. And four, and this has always been a bone of contention with administrative approvals. At a minimum, I think the city, if you're going that route, should post the famous green sign to at least allow neighbors a chance to contact either the zoning administrator or council with letters and emails saying how they feel. It may not have any impact on that particular administrative approval application, but at least would give an opportunity for neighbors to express their opinions. Well, I'm still having major problems on the parking, and I strongly advise that the parking requirements in the staff proposed ordinance be strengthened. I'm very worried about that. Under the staff proposed ordinance for option two, the parking requirements, two roomers may be satisfied, as I read it, with parking not only in front of the particular house in question, but in front of the two neighbors' houses as well. Because you used the word contiguous. And if you carefully look at the definition, it would seem to allow parking as counting as those spaces in front of neighbors' homes. If so, I think that's totally inappropriate. If that's not the intent, then I would like to see the ordinance clearly drafted that the parking is, those parking spaces that are being considered are only in front of the house, not on the, not in front of the neighbors' houses. Proposal three, and it seems to be stoking some confusion up here in the dais, on the face of it, looks like a continuation of the present system that allows the BZA to grant a special exception for three or four roomers. It's not the same, and don't kid anybody. Number one, you're allowing four rooms to be rented instead of two. That's a difference. And number two, the parking requirements have been substantially, substantially reduced, even if one reinstates and you have to have one parking per rumor as opposed to one parking per bedroom. Again, the same type of thing, as we've, as has discussed, right now, the BZA, if you have the off-street parking available... to one parking per bedroom. Again, the same type of thing. As we've, as has discussed right now, the BZA, if you have the off-street parking available, then the BZA, that's a criteria that we, that has to be satisfied. And in my opinion, with that criteria in, you've had a situation where we've allowed four, but only where it's really appropriate for the neighborhood. Because also, you have the screening requirement. If you go to the off-street, on-street parking allowed, especially if you allow parking in front of the neighbors' houses as part of the counting, you will substantially increase the number of houses that will be potentially roomed up to the max, and we substantially increase the amount of traffic in, in the neighborhood. If the criteria are changed, the BZA can't make up their own criteria. If the criteria says you have to satisfy X number of parking places and, and an applicant comes, comes in and satisfies that, then the BZA's hands are relatively tied. Then we can't just say, well, in your case, we want the old standard. You know, we don't have that flexibility. And I don't think you would want us to anyways. So, in, in the end, I strongly urge council that if it chooses to go option three, to reinstate the current parking and screening requirements in the existing ordinance. Those are my comments. I have, I've been asked to make three other comments and other people of the neighborhood. I don't know if I should do that now or in fairness, wait until the end.
I think there are other people-
Yeah.
-who also have letters and want to do that. So, and rather than having you come back up in half, why don't you just do it right now?
Okay. I see a, a short email note from Mary Ann Brendel, 311 Burns Lane, and I'll just read it verbatim. Stuart, I am helping with the back-to-school program for the growth community tomorrow, unable to attend the city council meeting. I think we should make no change to the existing ordinance. In case you're reporting response, in case you were reporting responses to neighborhood, I think that's why I'm saying this, I think permitting students to park on the street in front of the rented house or other houses is insane. And that's in capital letters. That's Mary Ann. There were two letters which were just sent to council. I don't know if councils received them. One was from Julie Hughes Camp.
Yeah, yes.
At 310 Burnslane.
We did, we did receive that.
Okay, you have that. It's in the record.
Right, yes.
And so-
And we'll, we'll make sure that's in the record.
And also, I guess, from our husband and son.
Yes, we got both of those, and I'll make sure those are part of the record of, of this debate.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much, Stuart.
Thank you.
The next speaker's card I have is David Cramble.
Good afternoon. I'm David Cramble. I live at 201 Harrison Avenue. Well, I think Stuart's comments are absolutely right on the mark. You need to put in nuisance as a reason for having ability to recall something. Now, I thought the students' presentation of why this is needed was very reasonable, and of course, students have been rooming in houses. I mean, my house was built in thirty-eight with a place for a roomer. We don't have it now, but, so this has been going on since the thirties or earlier. But you need to put that in. The second thing is I think we definitely need a time limit. And I, he mentioned three or four years. I was going to suggest two and then renewed for three and four, but, but four's a max and, and we definitely need a time limit. It makes it much easier to deal with what could be a problem. If there's no problem, fine, it will be easy. I, I, I think the idea of what happens to the, if you need a second roomer of, of having it go to the zoning person is excellent, and we don't need to have three hundred dollars and a lot of paperwork and time used up. I'm not going to the zoning administrator, but administrative approval. I think, again, Stuart's comment that still people should know about it so that people have the ability to communicate to the city administration whatever they're thinking. My final point is parking is the issue. And, and I haven't heard anything very clear about how that's going to work. So, I strongly suggest that you table this and don't vote on it without having defined for the people who are affected, namely those in the neighborhoods near the college, exactly what will be the parking regulation. And, and, and so, because this, this is a real, real, serious problem for everybody. And coupled with it, which isn't discussed here, is the concept of visitor passes. So, if I understand it correctly, if you live in a house, you have access to visitor passes and, and, or maybe I'm wrong. If you had four roomers and, and the occupant lives there, maybe that could be clarified.
Would you clarify sort of what?
I actually may need Jack to help me with the visitor parking regulations. Without looking at the city code, I can't tell you specifically what those are.
We'll, we'll come, we'll come back to that in our discussion, but I think, I think that the, the current administrative approval, approval has something to deal with that. But we need to make sure about that.
It's an issue. In fact, I think visitor passes, even without this issue, it's a separate issue, need to be reviewed so they don't become permanent parking passes because this just makes the situation even worse. So, thank you for listening to Stuart and I.
Right, thank you.
Totally support his well-thought-out comments.
Thank you, David. The next card I have is Victor Smith.
Victor Smith at 140 Chandler Court. We already have some people who have always rented to homeowner, to, to students. I think that's a great idea. We have several widows in our neighborhood who have rented one, one room to students. And in some cases, you know, that's been almost a necessity for those folks. And I think that that's a wonderful idea. I therefore counter a little bit the concept that that isn't happening, or the, the impression that that isn't happening from the students, because it is. I am concerned, however, with extending the numbers of people and the numbers of parking. Parking in our neighborhood is terrible. The visitors' passes have, I think, I can't, I don't want to prove it or mess with people's parking, but I think that that has been already a problem with some of the folks on Griffin. We now have two more rental houses that are renting to several students in the neighborhood. So, the concept of what a single-family dwelling, owner-occupied as, as an ideal for Williamsburg is, is not expanding in, in my neighborhood anyway. And so, to increase the ability, the ease of, of having a proliferation of people, in my opinion, is not a good idea. I think that neighbors need to know if it happens to go that you all want to have administrative approval, we really need to know because there isn't any, any option other than after the fact. And after the fact, you have to make a real stink and, and go through administrative routes and sometimes hire lawyers. And I don't like that. That's not very, very fair to neighbors. And I thought that that's what city council was supposed to protect neighbors from having to do. There are a couple other issues that, that concern me. I'm, I'm not in favor of having parking okay on the streets as part of the, the regulations. I think that that just, anything that allows more and more and more people to pack into places changes our neighborhood certainly from a residential neighborhood, which it pretty much is, to a rooming house neighborhood loosely defined by my own imagination, to a pseudo-dormitory situation, which we had a little bit over the, over the holiday because of the hurricane we had. And I don't object to that, but we had people in our neighborhood that had a lot more than however many, and that's okay because the college shut down. Even our, even the renters across the street that are new, the three, three girls in the house across the street were complaining because the probably, I don't know how many, ten boys or something on the corner where it used to be a, a teacher, three o'clock in the morning, and they were complaining. I was complaining. I had, you know, it, there's, there must be some sort of a, a formula for critical mass for people. But when you get over a certain number of people, the critical mass means you got, you got a problem because everybody gets excited, everybody talks at the top of their voices, and then on top of that, we have a parking problem. So, please, I, I would really vote for the least offensive and, and imposing on the neighborhood as we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Victor. The next card I have is from Debbie Keen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Debbie Keen, 718 Jamestown Road, Williamsburg. First of all, just wanted to take one minute to just make a public thank you to the Williamsburg Fire Department. They did an outstanding job on the night of the Hurricane Irene. We had a small fire in our home, and their prompt response, as well as their caring and professionalism, was absolutely outstanding. So, thank you. It was pretty scary. On a different note, and the obvious reason why most of the people are here today is probably because as soon as the residents hear the idea of loosening the guidelines for student housing in residential areas, we all get concerned. We all know that three-person rule created a lot of reaction in the neighborhoods last year, and now with the introduction of the new potential change, the concern is raised again. I'm here for a few reasons, but my first and foremost is to try and understand why the city spends so much time on student housing when there seems to be so many more pressing issues surrounding us. Residents are losing their homes to foreclosure. Businesses are closing. Tourism is at an all-time low, and our city schools are on a downward slide, and we're concentrating time and money on student housing again. I would really like to see our city council focus a little more effort on our town residents and let the college handle the students. The regulation seems to work fine just the way they are. According to the statistics that were cited in a previous council meeting last year, there were plenty of apartments available in the city for students to rent if the college could not provide on-campus housing. How many students actually have expressed a desire to live in an owner-occupied home with three other students? How many residents have expressed a desire to share their home with four other college students? Do we even know there's a need? According to the earlier statements here, there were five requests in twenty years. My other concern with council's need to address this issue is how important students seem to be when you have no problem making it very challenging for some small businesses to exist in the city. As you all know, we own the White House B&amp;B. We had to stand on our heads to meet the regulations of the city in order to open eleven years ago. And when we wanted to expand, you would have thought we were building the Taj Mahal. Our regulations fall in the same chapter for renting rooms to visitors as renting rooms to roomers. So, why then, when you have a two-room home renting to visitors, do we have to meet such stringent guidelines and an owner-occupied home renting to roomers does not? What's the difference? The definition of a visitor? A visitor is a tourist from New Jersey. A roomer may be a student from New Jersey. So, why is there the drastic difference in requirements? Under the current regulations in the city, a B&amp;B as small as two rooms has to provide onsite parking spots for each room, two parking spots for the owner of the home. It has to be on the property and screened. They must purchase a business license, pay business tax, pay for a health department inspection, be inspected by the Department of Health yearly, meet all building and fire codes. We must collect room tax for the city, the state, and occupancy tax. We must file a quarterly report to include how many guests, how many cars, and how many rooms are booked every single night in my private home. We cannot charge for any additional services or foods which limit our ability to survive in a recession. Yet, council's considering allowing the same homeowner to rent to four roomers without the same regulations. Why can owners that rent to roomers offer food at an additional cost? They are not even inspected by the Department of Health. Why do they have, why do they not require a business license as they're obviously collecting revenue? Why are they not required to have onsite parking for each room as well as two for the owners? Do they have to meet building and fire codes? What happens when each of those four roomers has a friend over for the night? I feel there's a great deal of inequity in these regulations, and once again, the tax-paying family is a second-class citizen to the needs of the college student. I think we need to focus on how to encourage our business to thrive and succeed. We need to loosen our strings on their requirements instead of loosening them on the students. We can have all the students we want in a residential area, but it's not going to keep our town alive, and it's not going to keep our tax base down, and it's not going to keep our city schools alive. We've been here for eleven years now. We've seen so many changes. Our dream was to open an inn here in Williamsburg, raise our children, and someday retire. Like many families, that dream is slowly fading, and we are doing everything we can to hold on. Tourism is what supports this town, so help promote the business that keep it alive. Children are our future, but our schools are lacking in so many ways. Look at our schools. Talk to our kids before it's too late, and it cannot be fixed. I would like to see the city focus some attention to the residents that live here, work here, and raise their children here. And let's let the college take care of the college. Thank you.
Those are all the speakers' cards I have, but anyone else who wishes to speak to, to the issue of bedroom rentals to roomers may do so. If you come forward, please state your name and address and make your remarks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Dell. I live at, live at 322 Indian Springs Road in Williamsburg. As you know, my wife and I stand firmly opposed in the strongest possible terms to options two and three of this proposal legislation. I have spoken against this proposal at the Planning Commission, and as you know, my wife has contacted each of you with her concerns. As a result, and for the sake of brevity, I'd just like to summarize why we so strenuously object. First, I cannot find a valid reason for doing it. And more importantly, I can't find a single benefit for our neighborhood should it be enacted. According to President Reavely, Special Assistant for Community Affairs, the college did not initiate this proposal. In fact, if you'll remember, a little over a year ago, President Reavely stated at publicly that last, at, at the meeting, that he did not want, nor did he feel it appropriate for to house additional students in our neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods. There is no need, as Mrs. Keen just pointed out, to allow increased room or occupancy in our single-family residences. There are plenty of apartment vacancies and motel rooms if necessary to satisfy the requirements of students unable to obtain housing on campus. It is not the city's responsibility, and certainly not the neighborhoods, to arrange housing for students, or anyone else for that matter. For, for the students, it's clearly a college responsibility. During the three- and four-person rule discover, discussions with the SHARP program participants at William &amp; Mary, my wife and I specifically asked the students if encouraging residents to make more opportunity for students to rent in owner-occupied homes would help. The answer was no. The students answered unequivocally. That was not what they desired. They only wanted to rent houses where they could live with their friends and do what they wanted to do. The Planning Commission has twice voted against this proposal as being inappropriate and forwarded their recommendation that there should be no change to the existing regulations. And given the current market conditions and the existing multiple-room rentals allowed by the already-approved three- and four-person rule, it is becoming increasingly difficult to preserve our single-family neighborhoods close to the college. Passage of this new proposal will only exacerbate the situation. Approval of this proposal will also adversely affect the legitimate rental businesses in the city. Mr. Vice Mayor, if you, you made that point abundantly clear during the council's previous discussions on allowing more motels to offer rooms to students at a council meeting last year. To refresh your memory, I would just like to quote what you said at that time. One of the things that strikes me as interesting about this conversation is that we have two different business sectors that have come, that have some crossover here, or potentially have crossover here, that some perceive putting them in competition with each, with each other. And what is interesting about that to me is that probably the biggest competition to the apartment business sector is the unbusiness designation of rental single-family homes. And so, you have a whole sector of industry that is not even considered a business, that is taking a much bigger chunk out of the apartment business model than this decision would, which we're talking about the motels in this case, but certainly applies in this particular case. End quote. There's a little bit more, but that's it. Last semester alone, we lost three of our previous single-family homes to student parents on Indian Springs. Two have three renters and one has four. We're fast approaching the tipping point with renters in our neighborhood. Regardless of any alleged ability to better enforce the new regulations, as is the case with the three- and four-person rule, city staff is unable to enforce the new regulation, and residents will once again be placed into a position of reporting violations. None of us want to be put in that position. There is insufficient parking. I won't even go on here because that's been mentioned so many times already. But parking violations continue to be rampant on Indian Springs. Administrative approval of the new guidelines will provide no opportunity for affected residents to object to the increased occupancy in a given neighborhood. And if passed, this proposal would not affect all neighborhoods. And if passed, this proposal will not affect all neighborhoods in the city. It is discriminatory to force unwanted roomer regulations on older neighborhoods that do not have a homeowner's association when you can't impose the same regulations on neighborhoods that have a homeowner's association that specifically prevents it. In closing, there are some present that do not want to speak, and I'd like to ask at this time for all those present here today that oppose this initiative to please stand. And in fairness, those in favor, please stand. Those in favor, please stand. Members of council, it appears to me the action you should take on this initiative is clear. I urge you to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation to make no change to the current regulation. Thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, I have some, do you want me to read those comments?
Mr. Dell, I'd like Stuart has some communication, and again, if you would go forward.
Okay. This first one is from Jim Roundtree on 701 Powell. "We are out of town and thus cannot attend the meeting, but please know that we, as 25-year residents of Powell Street, that we totally oppose this proposition as one potentially harmful to the quality of our neighborhoods. The number of renters should not be raised to four." Sue and Joe Roundtree, 701 Powell. This is from Patricia and John Latich at 606 Indian Springs. "Please convey our support for option one, no change to current regulations, as recommended by the Planning Commission, to be voted on by the Williamsburg City Council on September 8, 2011. We strongly oppose option three and are in agreement with the Planning Commission that is totally inappropriate for single-family neighborhoods. Thank you for the opportunity to express our opinion." The next one is from John and Sandy Disfossis, who live at 330 Indian Springs Road. "To the members of City Council, student living in neighborhoods, September 5, 2011. Thank you for this opportunity to present my opinion tonight. It seems clear to me that if someone works, if something works, you do not try to fix it. In an attempt to fix it, invariably you break it, and sometime you can break it to a point of never being able, or it never be able to work right again. The BCA is more than capable of governing the current three- and four-person rule and preventing our neighborhood from becoming a neighborhood of owner-occupied boarding houses. This is not good for our property values, the saleability of our homes, or the neighborhood's ability to attract young families and retirees buying homes and, from buying homes and moving in. Currently, Indian Springs has a beautiful mix of families raising their children, working people, and retirees. We hate for this mix to lean more towards a boarding house neighborhood and away from what we now currently enjoy. The decision you make this evening will impact the integrity of our neighborhood that may have dire consequences on our future, and with equal or more importance, your decision could irreversibly impact our property values forever. I ask that you listen to us, the residents of Indian Springs and other neighborhoods, of course, and do what is right for us. It is your duty as our representatives." The next one is from James Heller and Janet Crowler at 328 Indian Springs Road. "I cannot attend council meeting on September 8, and it looked problematic for Janet, too. I hope that you will be able to share our thoughts on the proposed amendments regarding the rental of bedrooms to roomers and owner-occupied, single-family detached dwellings. We have been residents of Williamsburg area since 1988 and moved into our house at 328 Indian Springs Road in April 2007. We moved to Indian Springs because it is close to the college and downtown and because it is a quiet residential neighborhood. In the last few years, we have seen several houses go from owner-occupied to rental, usually to students. Results have not been positive. The owners of the homes usually do not maintain their rental properties as well as when the homes are owner-occupied, and students have little incentive to maintain the exterior of the homes. In addition, automobile traffic in the neighborhood has increased, and it's fair to say that young students drive faster than older residents. This isn't to say we are anti-student. Our oldest son graduated from William &amp; Mary in 2009, and our younger son is a junior at the college now. I am Director of the Law Library and on the William &amp; Mary Law School faculty and enjoy working with students. Janet is Director of Outreach Services at Williamsburg Regional Library and works with people of all ages. The proposal to make it easier to turn residences into rooming houses is very bad for our neighborhood and bad for the city. We agree very strongly with the Planning Council's unanimous conclusions that alternative three is not acceptable, and with their four-three vote in favor of alternative one, that no change be made to existing regulations. Respectfully submitted, James Heller and for myself and Janet Crowler, my wife." The next one is from Heather Heike and Charlie Clapper. Charlie was here earlier but had to leave and asked me if I could read this also in the record. "To the Williamsburg City Council, as residents of the city, we oppose options two and three that you are considering. We have lived on Indian Springs Road for the past eight years, and recently we have watched as Indian Springs Road has become quite congested with cars as the number of residents in our neighborhood has dramatically increased. A real problem in an area where the streets are quite narrow. We have also watched a lot of Tuesday morning trash jammed full of beer bottles. We have a great deal of concern that our neighborhood is undergoing a transition from a gracious neighborhood to one that is with untrimmed yards and unkempt appearances. Now we hear of proposals to allow many unrelated people to live in owner-occupied houses. Williamsburg is not a city of huge Victorians suitable for such living, but generally one of smaller homes unsuitable for so many people squeezed together. Nor, given the size of most city lots, can adequate off-street parking be found. Williamsburg has successfully resisted the all-too-common circle of slums around colleges and universities. For decades, Williamsburg has been able to achieve a balance between the needs of students and the needs of permanent city residents. It needs to continue to do so. A student explained to me a year ago that his college years were his life's opportunity to live wild, to drink all he wanted, and to party before he had to get serious. When I asked him where he wanted to do this, he explained that is why he wanted to be able to live off-campus, to be able to do whatever he wanted. Given such attitudes, it is at any wonder we are concerned about four students in a house or up to four people renting in an owner-occupied house. I know that students are living quite well in the Governor's Inn, an excellent alternative. We are seeking balance and seeking to find density appropriate to the architectural heritage of these Williamsburg houses. Sincerely, Charlie Clapper and Heather Heike." And the last one, a little bit more humorous but still serious. "I really don't mind having a few students in the neighborhood, given that many longtime residents, myself included, appear to be of an age that would suggest that consideration of a move to the Landing or Westminster Canterbury, or the selection of a space at a memorial park of one's choice would benefit. By all means, let's lower the average age of students from 70 to 60. However, this might best be done by moving in a few families with young children and not by turning these neighborhoods into student ghettos." His words, not mine. "Our fraternity and sorority houses next?" There are few city council issues that so significantly impact the wonderful neighborhoods surrounding the college as this one. Given that even local politicians probably have, as their first priority, reelection, unless they aspire to higher office, perhaps a block of voters who vowed to vote in the next municipal election against any member of city council who votes in favor of the ill-begotten ordinance amendment might assist. Or, on a more sanguine note, we could vow to try to replace the ordinance-amending members of city council with members of the Planning Commission. Signed, Bruce Stewart, 128 Indian Springs Road." So those are additional individuals in our community that are objecting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dell. Does anyone else wish to come forward? Yep, please. Terrence, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Terrence Wheel, 4012 Harriet Tubman Drive. I do support not changing it, except changing it a little bit, and that's alternate one. And I would like to see two roomers allowed with administrative approval if they don't have vehicles. Because what we do now with alternative one is we force the homeowner, if they want to have two, even if they have no vehicles, to create vehicular spots for them. And then, of course, there's no incentive for them to have roomers without vehicles. So if we could make it easy for having two roomers, a couple to have two roomers, without vehicles, there's no impact on the neighborhood, and rightfully so. There's been a lot of discussion about parking, and that's a big worry. But if they have, people who, students who need this housing, who live close to college, don't need a vehicle, and if you see them leave, we have a student, leaves the house, he gets on his bicycle, he goes to class, you don't even know he's there. So I think without the requirement for parking, if we can just have students, up to two, without vehicles, should be an administrative and an easy process. It would help the homeowner. It would make for a nice mix of students in a neighborhood, in a family neighborhood. In conjunction with that, I think we do need to look at our parking regulations, perhaps have a citizen group to look at those. There are a lot of problems with them. It's $5 to get a permit here in Arlington, Alexandria. We're talking $20, $50, $250. The violations are very small here, and other places, they're a lot higher. The fact that you can get as many permits as you like for a house as long as you can show that you live there is also another problem. So parking is a big issue, but if a student doesn't have a car and he's living with a family, I think the family and the students can help each other out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Terrence. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Corey Trench and live at 714 Jamestown Road, right next to the Bed and Breakfast. I graduated from William &amp; Mary in 1976. I remember 1972 very well, by the way, because I was completely drenched, and I was hoping this would last long enough because that year, it rained the entire year, and I don't think any student on campus wore shoes, as I recall, so. I just want to make a couple of remarks. You know, one is, we've just been down here two years now, but my mother-in-law, who you all know very well, June Shields, has appeared before you before to talk about parking, about the speed of traffic on Jamestown Road. And it would be no surprise to anybody in this room that over 50 years, you know, a college town changes. And I think we have to recognize that there's a lot of pressure. I'm a father of three sons. Two of them are fortunately through college and paid for, and I've got one more to go. But the reason students seek housing off-campus is the cost of college education. It just, it needs to be acknowledged, and colleges are in the business of making money and filling chairs. That's why the college is expanding, cut their costs, make it more affordable. But if a college can, if a college student can find a place to live off-campus and save some money in order to buy a book, you know, they're going to do that. So I just want to acknowledge that, you know, the students who are here, you know, today, you know, while I favor everything that Stuart has said and the other neighbors here, my mother-in-law did rent a room out, and that's been done for many, many years in many college towns. But we're all one community, and I don't know where the college is today in the administration account here and speak because they're creating the problem by admitting more students. And so we need to be working with them in some way, shape, or form to help meet the needs of students. I don't think it should be exclusively that, you know, we find people feel pressured or they decide to sell their homes and then they turn into rental properties. Are any of you familiar with Ithaca, New York? Have you ever been there before where Cornell is? It's kind of a joke, but it's not funny. There are parents who buy homes and rent them out, and they're called slums. And if you graduated from Cornell University and you go back there after 30 or 40 years, you're going back to basically what looks like a slum area. If there's something that I would be afraid of as a new resident who's down here just two years is that, are we moving in that direction? Are we moving in the direction of creating an environment that used to be a residential community and a college community and a colonial community that all coexisted, but all of a sudden, we're moving rapidly in the direction of becoming like Ithaca, New York? I don't think we want to go there. So there's a more of a global issue that I have on my mind, and I've reached out to Scott Foster and Reed Nester, that I'd like to talk more about, and this is outside of this regulation, talk more about how limited space can be developed in a way that a different type of development can be provided in Williamsburg that preserves that sense of community, maybe encourages responsibility on the part of students so that we don't see them as out of control, perhaps. And so I've reached out to an architect named Chuck DeRette, and he's written a book called Creating Cohousing, and I noticed some years ago, in 2001, somebody had pursued developing, cohousing development here. And I think we need to look at, you know, the future of Williamsburg, and I know you've already been through the comprehensive planning process, and I apologize for not being part of that, but how we're all going to coexist with one another, we're going to recognize the fact that there is a demand for housing, how that's going to be provided, and we're going to preserve what I remember from being here in college, is that the students and the residents all got along. I don't really remember much of a problem there, and I've inquired with a number of people since I've come back, and they said, yeah, it's definitely different. So I appreciate your time today. I look forward, as a new resident, to working with the council members here and the Planning Director on maybe looking more globally at what we might do for the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name is Joe Hayman, 130 Indian Springs, and thank you, Mayor, Commission, for giving me just a moment or two. I've served on state commissions and appreciate what you give to the community in serving in the way that you do. In serving on a public body, decisions are made using expert information. The expert information that you have at your fingertips is your planning commission, and your planning commission has given you excellent advice. The other expert information that you have at your fingertips are the people who live in the community. And the people who live in the community are saying, don't change this process, please. You can see the direction that it's going. If you choose to change the process, you owe it to the people who have put you in these positions to explain why you're not following expert advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Would anybody else like to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion. If council would allow, I think there were several sort of technical questions that were raised in here. Would you like to address those before we begin our discussion?
You mean you've created another list? Go ahead.
It's not quite as long as the first of this. I think one of the questions that came up, if there were an administrative approval process, is there a mechanism for revoking that approval or not?
There is, it would be revoked by the zoning administrator, but there's nothing specific in there regarding what would lead to revocation. Other than not meeting the criteria, so I, Mr. Gotham brought up nuisance as an example. That is not currently in the proposed ordinance. It could be if council desired it to be.
And under administrative approval, the question was raised about what notice is given. Is there any notice given in the administrative?
There is not. I know, and I hope Reed is okay with me speaking for him on this, I know that there is some concern on the part of staff regarding doing the same types of notices, providing the same kinds of notices for administrative approvals, because administrative approvals have objective criteria in them. If the individual who owns the property meets that objective criteria, they're entitled to participate in that zoning benefit. So you're creating, potentially creating a false sense of the zoning administrator having some discretion when the zoning administrator would not.
That's helpful. The question was also raised about the meaning of contiguous. Is it, you know, what, in terms of zoning regulations, what does that mean? Reed, that may be for you.
Well, I took that, I took that to mean directly adjoining the property and the intent was to count the spaces, those spaces would have to be on the street directly adjoining your property line. Now, since that, since that was brought up, I've been Googling definitions of contiguous, and I don't know if adjoining would be a better word than contiguous, but...
Or maybe, if we were to go that way, a more specific definition... Or maybe if we were to go that way, a more specific definition of spaces in front of the property, or something like that.
The clear intent when putting this together was the spaces in front of the property.
That was the intent, but whether the wording gets the intent is part of, okay. I think there was also a question about, I think Mr. Wheel brought up the idea of, could we do administrative approval if they didn't have cars? Is that, Chris, is that, do we have the ability to do that, given the Dillon Rule and given the restrictions we operate under?
You can certainly provide for no additional parking as part of this, other than what they would be entitled to. So in this case, they would have to have the same amount that they would have to have under existing zoning.
But we couldn't specify that you can only get this approval if the rumor did not have a car, or is, would it be very cumbersome to do?
It would be somewhat cumbersome to try to administer that over a period of time because I'm sure that there are people who move into the community initially who don't have cars, who at some point during their time in the community then obtain cars. And so it would necessitate some kind of a certification at the beginning of the process, or something of that ilk, that the person that's rooming in the house would not have a car, and then somehow we would need to be able to continue to check on that. And we don't have a process in place for that. At this point, that would take a little bit of thought.
Okay, thank you. Also, several of the comments from letters and others suggested that option three was an increase in the number of rumors. Is that, I thought, I thought we currently had that you could have up to four rumors in a single-family detached owner-occupied residence, and that number still stays at four, does it?
It stays at four. The only difference is, under the proposed alternate three, you are not limited to two bedrooms. You could conceivably rent, you could conceivably rent more bedrooms, but it would have to be to the same amount of people.
So there's no more people in?
No more people.
Yeah, well, I realize parking's different, and we all realize that's a difference. So the other question that came up was a question about timing. Could we put limits on that? And Reed, I think I talked with you earlier, and you've proposed some wording that we might look at for that, whether we stay with the existing regulation or, I mean, one of the problems I have with not changing what exists is there could be some improvements in what exists in terms of the definition of owner-ride, the definition or the distinction between renters to visitors versus renters to rumors, putting a limitation on the amount of time that the special exception is good for. Those are changes in what exists, but some of us might see those as improvements in what exists. So Reed, would you go through, if we were to either stay with what we have or go with one of the other options, is there a way we could limit the time for which the special exception, or if there were a administrative approval, what those would be given for?
Yes, that could be done, and I have an example I could put up on the screen if you'd like.
Would that be acceptable to council to look at that and think about it? Okay.
Okay, if, if you wanted to limit the time, that, you see, there are two paragraphs. One applies to the administrative approval. That says administrative approval is valid for a two-year period, or until such time as the fee simple title to the property is transferred, or until the property is no longer owner-occupied, or if any of the other conditions are no longer met. So that could be put, added to the ordinance for administrative approval. And this is shown as two years. Of course, it could be four various time limits. For BZA approval, this option, possible option says the BZA shall specify a length of time that a special exception shall be valid, which shall not exceed four years. So we'd have a four-year maximum. The board could specify shorter. And the same provisos would apply to this as applied to administrative approval. If the title is transferred, if it's no longer owner-occupied, or if any other conditions are no longer met, it would be void.
And if we stayed with the existing ordinance, we could add this to the existing ordinance as a way of limiting or providing a framework for BZA to consider limiting.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Other discussions. Mr. Fryley?
I think we all have heard parking is an issue, so...
So let's talk about that.
Let's, I'll just put that to side for a moment and focus on the question about administrative approval versus BZA approval for the second rumor between options one and options three, recognizing we still need to address the parking concern, whichever way we go. The timeframe difference between administrative approval and BZA approval, to me, does not seem to be that significant, whether it takes one to two weeks to get administrative approval, or did you say four to, four to five weeks for BZA approval? I don't see that as a significant deterrent to somebody renting to a second rumor. The $300 threshold is clearly a bigger hurdle to make for the second. And it might not be that bad. It is what it is. If we put the term limit in on the BZA approval, then we're going to reimpose the $300 fee each time they come back in. And that, if we do that, that is what it is again. So that's really the, what, by going to administrative approval, those are the hurdles we're taking out of someone's way to rent to the second rumor. To balance that, if it's a single person living in the home as opposed to a couple, they can rent to the second rumor and don't need any approval. They don't need administrative approval. They can just do it. And I think it's, that's the part I'm struggling with in balancing it. I agree with everybody who's talked about, going back to parking. I agree with all the concerns about parking. We need to be very careful about anything we do there. Someone suggested, I think it was Terrence, we might even, you know, revisit parking regulations at some point. I know that's a really complicated thing. I'm not sure, that's not a part of this discussion, but I just want to emphasize that because we have to be sensitive to that concern. And that's the one thing I've heard over and over again from people I've talked to, is more the concern about parking than necessarily the second person in the house, although plenty of people have expressed that today, their concern about the second person. So that's kind of where I am, which isn't really telling you anywhere, except that I am a little concerned if we make major changes to this. I don't know about deciding that right now either. I mean, I struggle with that, too.
Scott?
Just several questions have been asked to, kind of, as to the origin of this, and largely came out of my own experience. I fall, it was the summer of 2010, I moved to Walnut Hills, living in a above-garage apartment attached to the house. It was a wonderful experience. So this kind of all developed, saying, you know, I'm a low-impact renter on this street. How can we better facilitate folks who do the exact same thing that I do? So here we are today. Several, several points have been made. Parking, parking needs to be customized to make this as low impact on neighborhoods as possible, if it happens. I'm definitely on board with that. There's also this grand theme of fear of losing the neighborhoods. And the challenge has been made that there's no valid reason for this ordinance. Right now, when you buy a house, $100,000 in mortgage costs you about $600 a month. I wouldn't be scared to say that the average off-campus rent per student is about $600. So in a conversation earlier this year with Mr. and Mrs. Dell, they pointed out that in order to make their house livable, they had to add, do $200,000 worth of renovation. If you put two students in that house, that pays for your renovation on your monthly mortgage payment. So imagine a young family coming to Williamsburg who can pay $450,000 for a house on Indian Springs or Burns Lane. It needs $200,000 to update grandmother's kitchen, new HVAC. They put those two rumors in there, it's paid for. It's essentially putting money on your mortgage. This is, in my, in my eye, if it's applied, if it's utilized, can be a net benefit to the neighborhood, because it's another way for people to reinvest in what we all love about Williamsburg, which is, which are, you know, healthy, you know, clean, attractive neighborhoods. I think, I think that's been largely overlooked in this discussion. Also, you know, this, this is largely centered around students living in these houses, and it will be. There may be some applications where it's, you know, a young professional or whatnot. This is going to attract a specific type of student. There's been, there's been some comment made of the wanton, reckless, over-consuming college student, that everybody likes to lump us into one group. That's not the case. A student who wants to live in a house with someone who owns the house is going to be very different. And I can say so because I am one myself. William &amp; Mary has a lot of those folks. So the off-campus student has really yet to, you know, it's not, there's not a really clear picture of that. This will attract a specific, very specific type of off-campus student, one that I would not be scared to say, and nine times out of 10, will be a very low-impact or positive, hopefully a positive-impact student. Just to revisit the parking issue, I think I have full confidence that as a council, we could come up with something that works. And if, if it needs to be stringent, especially for three and four, because that involves somebody making some serious, you know, a significant amount of money off their residence. And if they want to go there, they may have to make some exceptions, make parking work for them. That's, I do not mind putting that onus on the owner. So go ahead.
Thanks.
Doug?
Thank you. Guys, going back to April, when we got started with this process, I was excited about the opportunity of exploring this type of use in the neighborhoods, because I felt, as Scott just kind of talked about, we could provide a way to help preserve our neighborhoods by allowing the income for families to stay in these houses, whether it be a young family moving in, young college professor needing to help supplement some of their income to help afford the house, or as Mr. Smith pointed out about his neighborhoods, that there's a couple widows in there that rent to students. This affords them the opportunity to live longer in that house than they may otherwise be able to, and that preserves the residential aspect of that neighborhood. But, but having said that, and having served nearly eight years on planning commission, you know, we've gotten a lot of input from, from the planning commission, a lot of input from the neighborhoods. I'm willing with, willing to leave it just the way it is. But I'd consider some other thoughts.
Judy?
Well, for starters, I guess I've sat here getting a little angry, because I don't know where this idea came that we were doing some kind of increase. This is not an increase. If we leave it the way it is, which is what a lot of people seem to want, we actually are hurting ourselves, because some of these changes, the ones that Reed has put up here, would be really positive. And I also, I like the idea of separating the B&amp;B from the student rentals. I think that's, that's a, one of the things when you go into these things is you find things in your ordinances that really need to be fixed. And for people to get the community all riled up about how we're increasing the number of students who are going to live in the neighborhood, we already can do three or four in a house. The BZA can already do that. So this is not a huge increase. This is a changing, looking at the ordinance, maybe making a couple of improvements, doing something about parking, which we all agree is a huge problem. And whoever talked about visitors' permits being used as permanent parking, I agree with that, because I've seen that. We need to do something about that. But to, to get everybody all upset because we're doing this enormous thing when we're actually trying to make it better, we're trying to, I personally like the idea of administrative approval of two, because I do think the $300 is, especially for the widow that Mr. Poms was talking about. I think that is something that's, that's pretty big. I was on the BZA when we turned down the, the four people on Scotland Street and Henry Street, and that was because of parking. And so I think the BZA is very clear about the issue of parking. That's, that's a huge issue, and they understand that. I would like to see us tighten up this ordinance, using these things, doing something about the parking and making it better. I really would.
Thank you. Let me put something on the table for discussion. And what I'm going to propose is that, what if we were to stick with the existing regulation, but make the following changes in it? Leave parking like it is in the current ordinance. Put in wording such as this about the BZA could limit, what, you know, provide a time limit to it. Change the definition of owner-occupancy in terms of, that are in option two and three, because I think those are real improvements. And four, change the wording about the distinction between rental of rooms to visitors versus rental of rooms to rumors. Seems to me those three changes are all improvements. Parking leaves it like it is, which deals with many of the concerns people have expressed. I am willing to have a discussion about any one of those, but what are your thoughts? That's, so now we have something concrete to talk about as they propose.
Okay, so you're talking about option one with those changes?
With those four, with those three changes leaving parking.
What if, what if, we did option one with those changes, but on the second rumor, once it's gone through the BZA process, because now we're putting in this renewal mechanism that was not there before. What if on the renewal of the second rumor, that became administrative approval?
So it's a one-time $300 fee?
Is that legally possible to do?
You can legally do it. The cost of, the $300 cost is the city's actual advertising costs.
Right, that would still, that'd still apply for the first time.
But if you have a, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Councilman.
Oh, yeah, please.
If you have to go through another special exception process, and you have to go through the BZA process all over again, there will still actually be costs for the city in advertising any renewals. So if, if the special exception is only valid for four years, if it stays a special exception process, you're going to have a $300 cost every time you go through the hearing. So council needs to be aware.
So you can't have a BZA one-time approval, and then to renew that in subsequent terms, that could be administrative? Okay, I don't want to complicate things.
That would be really complicated.
It's still a special exception. It still has to be advertised.
That's right.
That's my understanding.
And I'd like to offer one correction. I had looked at our fee schedule. The standard fee for Board of Zoning Appeals application is $300, but for room rentals, which covers both B&amp;Bs and rental of rooms, it's a $500 fee.
Um...
Why is that?
I'm expecting that the reason that was put in at $500, because that was primarily pertaining to bed and breakfast use. I'm not sure when we did that. Fee schedules can be revised by council.
If, if we were to divide rental of rooms to visitors from rental of rooms to rumors, we could have two different fees for that.
Yes, you could.
Whereas right now, because they're together, it's the B&amp;B fee that dictates. Is that...
There could, there could be separate fees. That could be changed.
Do we advertise differently?
I don't know if...
Same advertisement.
Why wouldn't, I mean, if we're doing it to cover the cost of advertising, to me, if we're going to lower it, lower it across more. I mean, you know, that's just my feeling. We don't need to turn it into a positive revenue stream. We don't need to turn it into a positive revenue stream.
Here's, I like many of the aspects of the administrative approval for the second. What I'm having trouble with is the notification part of it. And one thing I like about having BZA approval of these is that there is notification, neighbors have a chance, you know, there is a public hearing, and I think there is some value in that, particularly in single-family owner-occupied residential neighborhoods, so that, you know, this is a change in the use of that property, and to have some notice that this change is taking place from one to two or three or four, I kind of like that. I'd like to have the administrative approval because it's simpler, it's less costly and what have you, but I also like the notification part, and I'm struggling with that, and maybe my fellow council members have some help for me in that struggle.
Michelle, could we make a condition of the permit that the applicant contact each adjoining landowner? Because this.
In fact, the problem, if it's really a straight objective criteria, and there's no weight put to neighbor input, the notification creates a false sense of some participation process that doesn't exist.
You think you're going to be able to make a difference with it.
Right. And I think that's going down. I mean, I thought when Stuart mentioned it, I thought, hey, that's terrific, but I get it now.
Any further thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion? Anybody want to?
It's hard for me to leave the, you know, in light of the current fee structure. I understand that can be changed. The second rumor being administrative, based on my own life experience, would be a pretty low-impact move. You take it up, put it on our street, that's one additional car in a very large driveway. That's, you know, that's not a draconian change. It's one additional car per house. Beyond that, BZA has full authority to make it work, as well as with whatever parking restrictions we come up with. I think the actual applied impact of that one additional spot is, I think we're making a bigger issue out of it.
So if we were to go that direction, which is really option three, parking still under the existing option three is, many people find problematic. Reed, is there a way we could change those parking regulations, or that parking wording in a way? I think we had a conversation, I think you've put together some thoughts that might work for that.
Okay. This, you could, how it reads now in the proposed alternate three, one parking space for each bedroom plus two parking spaces for the single-family dwelling. So in this option, I've scratched for each bedroom and just put for each rumor, which is the same as we have now. Now, this alternate says that parking spaces may be off-street or located along the frontage of the adjoining public street and contiguous to the lot, and it could say directly in front of or beside the lot. But it, or it could be changed to say parking spaces have to all be off-street, just like it is now. That would essentially leave it unchanged. So that's certainly a possibility. In the language pertaining to three and four rumors, which had BZA approval, I've done that same change, and there would be a possibility of adding the following. The Board of Zoning Appeals may require that parking be screened from adjoining residences by an element of the building, fence, lawn, or landscape buffer. So that does not make it mandatory, but clearly spells out that the Board of Zoning Appeals can require buffering if they feel it's necessary.
And if that buffering couldn't be had, they could not allow the third or fourth because it's not conducive to the neighborhood.
That's correct.
The current ordinance requires off-street parking for each rumor, and it requires that it be screened.
Correct.
Okay. Any thoughts on parking? Should we stick with what the existing ordinance has, or is there a benefit in changing to some?
Mr. Chair? I really like the idea of staying with option one, adding the two, Reed, could you go back to that?
Adding the timing, the bottom part of that.
Yeah. And adding the time limits.
The definition of owner occupancy and the separation of rumor and visitor.
Right. Those three things. Now, I realize that doesn't do anything about the administrative approval for the second rule. That's the only thing that's not.
What's our recourse for changing our fee structure for that?
That we could, yeah, Chris?
We can set our fees at whatever we choose to set our fees at, and I just wanted council to be aware there are actual costs associated with special exception.
And those fees are changed by council action, so we could do that at a future meeting if we wanted to.
Yeah.
I don't think that that has much to do with, I mean, if we're only talking a couple hundred bucks, if you're going to make $600 a month, well.
I think the only question is, you have no idea going in how it's going to go.
Yeah.
Putting that money upfront. But I can't, I just, you know, looking at the differences between one week, two weeks, four, five weeks, and, you know, $500 sounds like a lot, but if that's what it is, you know, if you really want to do it, and you're obviously doing it for the income stream.
Let's see.
And the fee structure is really a discussion for another time.
And my point, you're talking about the timetable, and this is very hypothetical, but one to two weeks is a lot better than five weeks if you're deciding whether or not to buy a house, whether, if you can rent two spots, because that's an extra six, eight, 1,200 bucks that you're having to make up. So if council's trying to apply the logic that this will facilitate home buying by someone who wants to reinvest in the neighborhood, I would still advocate for the administrative approval.
For the second person?
For the second.
For the second person, right.
You put something on the table concrete that we're talking about.
I put something on the table if somebody would like to make a motion. I mean, I think we've probably beat this horse to death, so I think it's probably the time to come to somebody, if somebody would like to make a motion, to either stay with what we have but make the changes that have been proposed, or to go to option two with several changes that have been proposed.
Option three.
Option three, I'm sorry, with some changes, particularly in the length of time.
The parking is such a huge issue that if we stay with option one and don't change the parking, but add things to alternate one with, and then we don't mess with the parking. You know, we don't have to come up with all kinds of language about the parking because we know what the parking is. So we could add the second, you know, administrative, we could do four changes to option one.
So what you're saying is, well, if we change option one to administrative approval for the second, it becomes option three, keeping our current parking regulation?
Yeah. Sort of.
And it changes the definition of owner.
And we get all those other good things.
I'm all for those updates.
And then since we're concerned about cost, I would ask that we remove the requirement to get an attorney to certify ownerships. As Ms. Sheldon says, we don't need that.
I think you need to have a title company or an attorney certify it because otherwise someone from my office is going to end up at the clerk's office making sure that that individual still owns the property.
But if the owner of the property went to the courthouse, got a copy of their deed.
There is no guarantee that that's the most recent thing that has happened. As this is written, there are specific requirements about the certification and when the city has to receive that and when that certification has to be made.
How much does that cost a senate attorney to do that?
It varies. It's a few hundred dollars.
But if the owner, but if you get a signed affidavit from the owner of the properties, you know, with this deed, you know, we're taking risks all over the place. But to impose this fee on this additional cost on a resident, to me seems a little arduous, too.
I, you know, I think the city, everything we can do to ensure that this is a, you know, is legal, i.e. that this person is, in fact, the owner of the property that's getting this is important, and this is a way to ensure that, you know, you have a third party who has the experience that either the title company or attorney that can specify this.
And you would need to specifically add title companies because that isn't currently in the ordinance.
So we could, so we could stick with what we have, that leaves parking as it is. We could essentially do the change in timing, as worded here, the change in definition of owner occupancy, the distinction between rental to visitors and rental to rumors, and add certification by an attorney or title company to that.
And add this second rumor administrative approval.
That would be fine with me.
We could do that. That's just option three with.
Alternate milkshake.
With.
Parking.
Parking, you know, with parking change, with the change of length of time of approval and the change in wording about.
Also, keep in mind, option one.
Option three.
Alternate one. If this is what we're modifying, you've got a different number of bedrooms.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Option one has only two bedrooms.
I think the bedrooms end up being a wash because if there's four bedrooms with four people in it versus two bedrooms with four people in it, that's a.
Would somebody like to make a motion? Or are we at the point where we could do that?
In some ways, we make some things better and we make some things worse, isn't it? I mean, the more we talk about this, the more it sounds like we should, I'm inclined to just leave it as it is.
Mr. Man, I'd like to make a motion that we stick with alternate one and make no changes.
I have a motion that would mean no change in the wording about owner occupied, no changes in the wording about visitor rumors, rental to rumors versus rental to visitors, and it would make no, provide no specification of the time for which this is approved. I personally have problems with that, but do we have a second? No second? Does anyone else want to make a motion?
I'll motion. We approve option one with the, you're going to have to help me here, the change in the definition of owner occupancy. Administrative approval for the second. The other thing.
The wording about.
Yes, the wording about the differentiation between owner occupied versus business.
And the definition of certification by either an attorney or, which essentially is option three with option one parking designated in it.
Exactly.
Where, I'm sorry, the number of bedrooms, where are you?
Well, option three is up to four bedrooms. Yeah. I mean, I think, as I understand the intent of your motion, it is to do option three with the parking restrictions in option one.
Option one, exactly. Excuse me. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the rule?
Well, I just want to make a comment.
Yeah, comments.
People are going to hate me. I don't like that because what we do is we keep the cost about the same, and we make it more expensive to go to three and four because we put in the renewal and that, you know. So the net result, if the hurdle that we're talking about was this cost to advertise, we're keeping that same cost, we're just getting administrative approval, so it doesn't do any good for the homeowner, and it certainly doesn't seem to do what the surrounding neighbors like, and so to me.
It does some good for the homeowner that wants to rent to the second, to two rooms.
But now they have to pay an attorney or a title company.
Well, they would definitely do that anyway.
If we didn't do anything.
Right.
As part of alternate three, they would do that.
If we didn't do anything.
No. Well, yes, they would have to do that if we didn't do anything that's in the existing ordinance.
Okay. So they still have to pay that. But we put the extra cost on for the additional BZA reviews.
What extra cost?
Well, excuse me, but I don't see, you know, attorney fees in option one.
There you've done option three.
The question was, we're putting, Paul, Vice Mayor Friling was saying that we're putting all these extra fees on there. I don't think that's the case with option one.
Does the current, does the current regulation require certification of?
That certification, as I recall, was part of this when B&amp;Bs were permitted under the ordinance. So I'm, I think it's part of the existing ordinance, but if you give me just a moment, I'll double-check.
So let me.
And let me just say, even, however that turns out, we're also adding additional costs for the subsequent BZA special right exception approval process.
The renew, it's those fees every four years?
Yes, and Councilmember Pons, it is part of the existing ordinance. It's 216052A of the existing ordinance.
So let me see if I understand. The motion on the floor that's been seconded is the motion to adopt option three with a change of the parking regulation to what exists in the current, option one, the current regulation, and a change in the wording about certification to add title company, our title company to that. Is that what everybody understands to be the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Seconded. Scott, would you call the rule, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Hi.
Mr. Pons.
No.
Mayor Holman.
No.
Mr. Friling.
No.
And Mr. Foster.
Motion fails three to two. Would someone like to make another motion?
Well, do we need to make another motion?
We can, or we can, if it's failed with the existing regulation stands, or we could, I think, I think there are some improvements to the existing regulation, particularly in terms of providing some time limit, providing a better definition of owner occupancy, and separating rumors from visitors that would make the existing regulation better. We can stick with the existing regulation, or we can make it better. But right now, the proposal has failed the existing ordinance stance. So unless anyone wants to make a motion, we'll move on to the next order of business.
Can we ask staff to look at the advertising fee, the cost to the city of the advertising for these, and then give us some input or guidance about what the fee should be?
Thank you all very much for being here and for participating in this discussion. Okay. Our next order of business is a public hearing on PCR 11-15, the request of Carlton Holdings LLC for a special use permit to construct a commercial building and 29 condominium units at 301 Second Street and 320 Penniman Road. Mr. Nester, you?
This is a special use permit for a new mixed-use development consisting of a one-story commercial building and 29 townhouse-style condominium buildings, and the location of the property is shown on red on this map. To orient you, this is Second Street, the city line here, Hage Street, Parkway Drive, and this is on the curve of Penniman Road going out, and this is York County here. The last business in the city here is McDonald's, and there's a Jiffy Lube right here. the last business in the city here is McDonald's, and there's a Jiffy Lube right here. This is the proposed site plan. These are the townhouse-style condominiums. This is the commercial area. This is the existing velvet shoe string. Commercial, of course, will be located between Second Street here and Penniman Road here, with access from Second Street, and the 29 condominiums are located along Penniman with access from Penniman Road. This area is designated by the comprehensive plan as corridor commercial land use and its zone B2 corridor commercial district. This allows up to 67% of the gross floor area to be devoted to multifamily use. If a special use permit is approved, that multifamily has to be condominiums, and it has to be constructed simultaneously with a prior, well, the non-residential has to be constructed simultaneously with or prior to the construction of the multifamily floor area. The Architectural Review Board reviewed this request and recommend and, uh, concept, recommended conceptual approval of the design of the commercial and residential buildings at their August meeting. This is the velvet shoe string, and this is the Second Street elevation of the new building. This is, have Second Street here, Penniman Road here, that's the side, and that's the rear. These are the proposed townhouses, or townhouse-style condominiums. Looking at the traffic flow in the site, on Second Street, there will be a two-way entrance into the new parking lot. There will be a one-way driveway with access to angled parking and a one-way exit on this end of the property next to Jiffy Lube. There is an area for emergency access, but not normal vehicular access off of Penniman Road. There is a two-way entrance here for access into the town, townhouse-style condominiums. There is an area for emergency access, but this is not a standard vehicular access. Stormwater management, it will be handled by an underground piping system. Originally, it was looked at running the stormwater down this way, but it was redesigned during the review process, so the stormwater will be discharged here, limiting the impact on the adjacent stream bed. Peak runoff rates are reduced to values lower than the collective runoff rates on the current development, and the total pollutant loading is reduced by the use of BMPs and the purchase of regional access credits. The property was purchased by the current owners in 2005. Limited Phase II environmental site assessment was conducted by ECS. Five borings were made and soil samples were screened for volatile organic compounds. Soil and groundwater samples were analyzed, and it was found that subsurface soil and groundwater at the site do not appear to be impacted by past activities on the site in the fill area. It was the opinion of ECS that no further environmental investigation, sampling or testing is warranted for the site. There was testing done for geotechnical issues. This, over many past years, was a site that was a receiving area for various kinds of rubble and construction debris. It was filled in over many years. They did an analysis in December of last year. Eighteen borings were performed on the site, and that's what you see here. It was found that up to 20 feet of fill was located across the site predominantly adjacent to the stream here. In June of this year, they dug five test pits and noted that there was a small topsoil layer, next layer up to four feet, contains large pieces of fill debris, up to two feet in size, and that there's a third layer that goes deeper, generally three to 16 feet, that has smaller pieces of fill, less than two feet in size, and that includes gravel clay, concrete debris, wood fragments, glass fragments, brick fragments, and garbage debris. Based on the test pit observations, and these are the test pits that were dug, ECS recommended removal of the top three to four feet of fill material on the site because of the large side pieces of debris. They noted that helical piles can be installed to support the building foundations if this top three to four feet of fill is removed, and this was based on the conditions observed in the five test pits. And they noted that if obstructions are encountered in other areas, deeper depths of removal may be necessary. The green area is the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area buffer, and that's alongside of the stream bed connect, that is between this property and the adjacent residential lots in Middletown Farms in York County. A hundred-foot Resource Protection Area buffer has been provided. Based on our investigation of the site, we found that the RPA contains a considerable amount of fill debris. Of course, this was noted by ECS also, and we feel that this should be left in place since large trees and ground cover have grown over the area, but we feel that the applicant should be required to remove loose debris by hand in the fall or winter when the ground cover is not present. Removing all of the fill debris in this RPA area will, we feel, cause more damage to the stream bed than just leaving it in place. This is the landscaping plan, and it's our standard landscaping plan with one little twist to it. Second Street, as you move from Page Street to the city line, gets wider and wider and wider, and this is where the property line is. This is where their landscaping is, and there'll be a driveway, as there is now, on part of the city right-of-way. So if we required the standard 15-foot landscape buffer, then you have no parking in the front. So the, the solution here was to provide a, that's 15-foot landscape area in front of the, in front, in the city right-of-way. It will take a future agreement with the city to plant and maintain the existing landscape island to meet the intent of the 15-foot landscape requirement. This was acceptable to staff and also found acceptable to the planning commission. Now, this is back to the, to the overall, the overall site plan. Again, you have your new, your new commercial building, which is a little over 13,000 square feet, and your 29 condominiums. The commission held its public hearing in August and recommended that the special use permit be approved, which allows the construction of the proposed condominium buildings that don't have more than two-thirds of the floor area for the site. And this is actually the first proposal we have that uses this provision in the ordinance that we put in following the approval of the 2006 comprehensive plan. There are eight conditions recommended. Many of them are self-explanatory, so I won't go into those. Number four is approval of, as part of the approval, this approval landscape waiver along Second Street contingent upon the applicant entering into an agreement with the city on the planting and maintenance of the landscape area in the city right-of-way prior to approval of the final site plan. And I think because of the width of the right-of-way in this vicinity, this is a good thing to do, and, and helps with the optimal arrangement of the commercial use in this property. I'll skip to six now. Item number six talks about removing the loose debris in the RPA, which, which I just mentioned. Probably the cent, the central issue in this, in the review of this proposal deals with the fill on the site. This site has a long history of, you know, receiving various types of debris, and as I mentioned in talking about the ECS report, that goes down to 15, 20 feet in depth, and that's in the residential section of the property. The staff recommendation and the planning commission recommendation was that three to four feet of fill be removed from the residential site, and that's consistent with the ECS recommendation, and, and there are no issues with the developer on, on that part of condition number five. For those areas proposed for residential buildings and within five feet of those buildings, the commission's recommendation, based on the staff recommendation, was that all fill must be removed and replaced with compacted or documented engineered fill. And that is where, where the issue is now pertaining to this case. That recommendation, I think, recommends the preferred solution to developing this property. Now, the question is, is, that's, preferred solution is remove all the fill material. So the question is, is there an alternate adequate solution? And to address this, the applicant has submitted a revised condition number five, which you have before you. So this condition would remove the three to four feet of fill. It would have, update the Phase II environmental site assessment, and submit that for city review and approval based on additional soil borings. And this, this said at least one per building site, but it would be, and it's on the sheet you have in front of you, it would be at least one per residential unit. There are 30, not, 29 residential units, so this would be 29 additional test borings. And in, in this, with these borings, if the assessment concludes that there are no adverse environmental conditions, construction may proceed. If it finds adverse environmental conditions, remediation recommendations must be followed or all fill removed and replaced. The applicant would install a vapor barrier and gas collection and venting system under each building unless existing fill is removed and replaced. All residential buildings would be constructed on a foundation supported by non-fill material, which could be something like helical piles. It would need to be in accordance with the city's building code. Third-party inspections would be performed by an independent engineering firm. And the applicant will disclose to all future owners of the residential dwelling units that they have been constructed on a site containing undocumented fill material. This will be in a format acceptable to the city attorney, and this, this would be, if you look at the more detailed language you have before you, this would be in a format that, that is recorded. Now, when this was looked at, at the planning commission level, these revised conditions were not on the table. It was mentioned that there was no, because there were not, because there was no hazardous material found on the site, there was no disclosure that was legally required to potential buyers of these 29 condominiums. That was a concern when we were reviewing this. So what has changed between what has been permitted to planning, what was presented to planning commission, and what you have before you is additional soil borings, at least one per unit, disclosure to applicants, and various, various additional things that the developer would do during the constructions of these buildings. So I guess in, in looking at it from my standpoint, I guess I'd say, is this, is this the preferred solution? I would say no. Is this an acceptable solution based on the additional things that have been, that have been offered by the applicant? I would say what they have offered up before council today would make this an acceptable solution for the, for the development, although not the preferred solution, but I think it's one that I could live with.
Right.
And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Reed. I'll now come to question, to the council for questions before we open the hearing. Does anyone have questions for Reed?
I just have a question about your last comment. It's not the preferred solution, but it's an acceptable solution. Do we have any other models to look at about the acceptability of this solution? How it's, whether it's been utilized elsewhere, how it's been utilized? Do you know?
I don't, I don't have any. You may want to ask that question of the applicant and their engineers that are present.
Okay. And I do have another question. Could you go back to the, one of the original site plan, or the backs of the buildings there? I guess, I don't know, north is that way, so I guess it's heading east across the property line. Is that, what is in that area?
In here?
Yes.
Jiffy Lube is right here, and McDonald's is right here.
And then beyond that, the ravine continues?
Beyond that is the ravine. There are, these are the Middletown Farms, single-family residential lots here.
And then how far beyond the property line are the houses? Just another, I guess it varies, but another 20, 30, 40 feet? Or is there another RPA on the other side? Or they may, they may have been constructed before the RPA was-
They were, they were constructed before the Chesapeake Bay regulations. If, let me, I can go back to my first aerial photo that will show the relationship of this to the entire, yeah, there, there you can see, the houses are hard to pick out because of the wooded area, but here is McDonald's, and here is a Jiffy Lube building. This is a commercial building in York County here. This is Merchant's Tire.
It looks like there's at least, at least another 100 feet, if not more, going to the rear of the houses.
Yeah, it's, we walked a little bit of that area, and since it's a slope leading down to the stream bed, yeah, there's probably generally 100 feet there.
Thank you.
Scott, do you have any questions for Reed?
Not for Reed, thank you. Reed, it, it's not uncommon that a developer would bring back something, a situation like this would, would occur, and, and there's some compromise. I mean, it may not be preferred. We've, we've recommended one thing, developers come back with an alternative, and we've compromised and agreed to that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not unusual. Judy, any questions?
Since there are no further questions, I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak may come forward. If you please state your name and address.
If you please state your name and address. Vernon, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Vernon Getty, 1177 Jamestown Road. It's a pleasure to be before you today representing the applicant Carlton Holdings. Louis Walter, the principal, is here. Jim Bennett with Louis's organization and two folks from ECS if we have technical questions. Before getting to the issue, Reed described quite ably to you, I'd like to first say, I think this is a great project. I really think this will be a shot in the arm for that area of the city and it's a well-designed, good project. I'd like to thank Reed. I've only been involved in this venture for about a week now, but we've worked very hard over the last week to come up with the acceptable solution. The issue that came up for, for the applicant with condition five is it's currently written is, as Reed said, in places that fill is twenty feet deep and it was prohibitively expensive to remove all that fill and replace it. It would literally make the project not feasible and I, I think that would be a shame for all of us because it is such a good project. This alternate proposal, this is not a unique situation. This, this situation is run into fairly frequently and there are standards that you do these environmental studies to, to determine if it's any threat to public health and safety and if there's not, you can develop. I don't think we ever had any differences with Reed on the geotechnical aspects of what was needed to support the foundations. That's, you know, straight engineering. The concern was environmental issues. And I think with the additional testing we've suggested, the twenty-nine additional borings, one for each unit, we can be sure that either the site is clean or that the necessary steps, you know, up to removing the fill and replacing it are taken to make it safe. So I think at the end of the day, you will have a, a safe and good project. And somebody had asked, is there precedent for this somewhere with the guidance of our friends at ECS? The city of Chesapeake, a neighboring city here in Tidewater, has very specific ordinances on this. They've run into this enough. They have ordinances that say what you do in this situation and we shamelessly based our condition on what they would require in terms of both testing, remediation, and disclosure. So there is precedent for it. With that, we would urge you to adopt the amended condition five and approve the, the use permit. We'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Vernon?
Actually, I have a question. I don't know if it's Vernon or maybe Reed. Reed mentioned what he found pieces. What else has been found in there? What are the?
Well, it's debris. Concrete, glass, brick. I mean, you know, stuff has been dumped in there. For example, you know, there's evidence of some organic matter, which is why we've agreed to put in the vapor barriers and gas venting system in case it produces methane. I mean, you typically would find the methane and then go to that step, but just to give everybody comfort, we're willing to do that upfront.
Do we know what that property had on it ever? I mean, was it just?
The uses, we know. What's unknown is, you know, a lot of people apparently have dumped a lot of things in it over the years.
But there was never any kind of business?
Oh, yeah. In the commercial part, there was, there was an automotive business.
Sure, what's on Second Street, but I'm, I'm much more worried about the residential. I mean, there are kids back there.
Yeah, I think the issue in the residential part's the fill, not the prior uses.
Not the, okay. Thank you.
The fill was put there with the intention of leveling the lot or is this somewhat a place where you could go and just go and dump?
Be sure you understand, the applicant didn't have anything to do with the fill.
Oh, of course, historic.
This was, yeah, over the last seventy, eighty years, this has happened and I assume it was a convenient place to dump things.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Any other questions for Vernon? Thank you very much, Vernon. Would anybody else like to speak to this?
Mr. Mayor, council? I'm John Whitley. I live at 110 Governor Berkeley Road, speaking as an individual. I have some environmental concerns about this project. Anytime, one of the caveats is that you let folk know what they're being, what they're living over, it does concern me. When we look at the borings and the evidence of what might have been in there, everything from, from wood to what other substances and then the issue of methane. And then as I read the information that staff provided to you or to the Planning Commission to you also, the issues of who might be purchasing these places, teachers, firefighters, police, law enforcement officers, and others seeking affordable housing. I would hate that in some, at some point, we find that the abatement that we put in place did not yield the results that we anticipated and that the project becomes a land-based love canal. It's not what we really, really need. I also wonder about its consistency with the process of developing the Northeast Triangle. I know that this does fit within that and its consistency with that structure. I'm sure that the engineering minds that have addressed the issues of environmental quality and, and the health and safety of residents can satisfy to a certain degree the concern that I'm stating. But if I were seated where you are and I were inviting people to become a part of our community, then I'd certainly want to make certain that the twenty-foot, feet of, of debris were abated and that there were such things there that we could assure without any caveats, any conditions, that the land was safe, the land was, was healthy, and that children and others who move about there would, would be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Would anybody else like to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for questions.
I just want to, for disclosure, I do own a piece of property on Penman Road, but, but the fact that I do will not impede my ability to make fair decision on this.
Vernon, you said there were representatives from the engineering company here. Could we ask you to come forward and maybe address some of the environmental concerns that have come up?
This is Jack Lewis. Jack Lewis with ECS Mid-Atlantic, geologist, and this is?
Lloyd Ward with ECS.
Okay. So tell me a little bit, and tell us a little bit about sort of what your testing has shown so far. And I understand that you, you didn't reinvent the wheel and went to Chesapeake and found something that looked workable.
Yeah, we've done similar projects.
But yes, tell me a little bit about your experience with these types of projects.
Similar project we did in city of Chesapeake was for Chesapeake Homes. They wanted to develop townhomes, condominiums on the E.V. Williams landfill. Construction, similar site, construction, demolition, fill, you know, concrete, rubble, brick, block, pretty much inert debris. But there was some organics that we found in the, in the geotechnical studies, so we went further and did some environmental soil borings out there with, across the property and in the building, in the building, footprints for all of them and found some methane because of the decomposition from some of the organics, you know, monitored it over a period of a month and were able to mitigate that by installing a vapor barrier which seals all penetrations to the slabs or the crawl space. And then there's a sub-slab ventilation system that you can put in that vents up through either roof fence or through the wall system. That can either be passive or, or active system if it needs to be. But at this point, we don't even know if that's a concern right now, but when you go out and you look at these construction demolition landfills and do environmental work, you pretty much sample for everything. That, I mean, you sample for anything you can find and?
So if, if in doing these additional borings, what kinds of things would lead you to say, we need to take this all out rather than do the mitigation that's been, been proposed in this alternative stop five?
As far as, as far as if you get into the risk-based side of it, if there's no drinking water wells on the site or there's no surface water, nobody's going to come in contact with, say if you've got contamination at twenty feet or there's stuff twenty, thirty feet down, nobody's going to come in contact with, there's very low risk for either dermal ingestion or any type of contact with it. So you can mitigate it by the vapor barriers and the ventilation systems. You wouldn't necessarily be required to or need to remove it. You can remediate it through engineering controls.
But what, what could you find that would lead you to say, we need to take this all out?
Or?
Potassium.
Yeah, right, yeah. Donium, dry, I don't know what's out there.
Yeah, okay, but, but there could, there could be.
Certainly.
There could be things you found there.
And that's why we suggested of putting that number of borings out there. I originally suggested and talked to them about doing one per building footprint, which still leaves, I mean, that's just a two-inch hole. So we, you know, up the, up that to do every single building unit, you know, and looking at all soils, classifying all those and screening them and?
What is your degree of confidence in this process and doing those borings for each, each unit? Anybody have any additional questions?
In the previous, there has been some previous Phase Two work that's been out there that hasn't found anything. This is just going to add to that.
Okay, great. Good, thank, thank you very much. That's very useful. Anybody have any further questions?
I have a question for, I don't, I guess, Mr. Nestor. Is it, is it Dan's team, your team, who reviews the information that you have and determines whether it's acceptable or not?
It would be a joint effort, I think.
Okay, but you earlier stated this was an acceptable solution, so you reviewed it to make that statement. So it was a joint effort between Planning and Public Works?
The, all the additional information that was provided is on, on the sheet you have and that, there are no test results from that. That is additional things that will be done prior to the construction. And the notification, which is not required and was not part of the proposal when it was before Planning Commission, that's something else that will be done. I mean, as far, I mean, there's no additional results to analyze or review because the testing hasn't been done yet.
But once it is done, then it will come to you and then what will be the review process?
Well, we, that would be, that would be looked at in conjunction with the final site plan for the residential section of the property.
So it would be looked at, yeah, so it would be looked at by you, by Public Works in conjunction with, and then would be reviewed by?
Our whole, our whole site plan review process is Planning, Public Works, Police, Fire, and Code of Compliance. So that's, that's the tip, that's the typical, the typical review that we go through.
That's useful. If it's okay with council, I think the engineer would like to add something. Is that fine? Yeah, please.
Jack, if I was just an additional level of review, their study would also be reviewed by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality.
Okay, so they do a review of this?
Yeah, they'll do a review of and give any regulatory opinion that they have on it.
Great, thank, thank you, that's helpful. Any further questions, any discussion?
I have a comment. You know, I'm almost more concerned about whatever is in the, the RPA that is, you know, waters flowing across and going in, into the water system than debris that's well below the surface that if not disturbed, probably stays undisturbed, but.
Which has been going across for a long time. Maybe these people will stop it.
I mean, we, as we looked at this in Planning Commission, we were, we were not looking at any removal of fill in this area. I guess thinking that the, you know, it's just what we would have after removing all that. We'd be better off leaving what's in place and all the vegetation that is growing back, provided that we remove as much of the loose debris as we could have. And we were not anticipating any removal here. It's just really, really around those, those residential lots. One, one thing that I didn't mention in my review was, in addition to their eight conditions, the commission also recommended that the city manager consider the reduction of the posted speed limit from twenty, thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour in conjunction with the residential portion of the development. This is on, this is on that, that stretch of Penman Road.
So, so as I understand it, what we have is the, the recommendation from Planning Commission with the revision of item five in what's been proposed by the applicant?
Right, which to me is an acceptable, but not the preferred solution.
Anybody like to further discussion or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve PCR number 11 dash 015, request to Carlton Holdings LLC for special use permit to construct a commercial building and twenty-nine condominium units at 301 Second Street and 320 Penman Road.
With the change in item five?
Sir.
Do we need to incorporate the city manager's recommendation or is that, that all takes care of itself?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson? Mr. Pons? Mayor Holman? Mr. Frye? Mr. Foster?
And thank you for your assistance in this. We really appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Right, yes.
We impose the cost. As I suggested at the beginning, we're going to change the order a bit and before we go to our next public hearing, move the city manager report on financing the Quarter Path at Williamsburg Core Infrastructure. Jack?
Yes, we have with us today some very long-suffering representatives and Jason Fickersmith is coming forward. He is with Willowood and his associate, Bill Kinnery. They are the development partners working with Riverside, who's also well represented here today. And so what we have, what I've asked Jason to do is give the council a briefing on the improvements that are being contemplated for Battery Boulevard, associated drainage. And so Reed would get that slide up and then we'll talk a little bit about the next step, which will be the financing of those improvements, which will come back to you next month. So, Jason.
Sure, welcome. Thank you. We've, in our presentation, broken down the, the improvements to Quarter Path kind of in three categories, utilities and then roadways and then recreational facilities. So this first slide talks about the utilities that are required for the project. And we have schematically drawn them on the approved preliminary plat, plan that was done, I believe, in 2007, Reed, is that? I think if everyone's familiar with the Quarter Path project, it's kind of wrapped by Route 60 on the east side, northeast side, which is kind of the right-hand side of the, of the page, Route 199 on the bottom of the page and Quarter Path Road on the left of the page of the west. And primarily, the spine infrastructure for the project is connecting Route 60 to Quarter Path Road near where Quarter Path Road hits 199. And this infrastructure will provide for the development of the bulk of the project and area that was zoned to the environment, the ED District, the Economic Development District. The utilities that are part of the CDA are the water line, which goes from Quarter Path Road down here, along Battery Boulevard, and then connects to the water tower, which is under construction, nearly complete now, which is not part of the CDA, but was part of the proffers for the zoning of this project. The exact route to the water tower is still under a little bit of debate, but generally, you're bringing the main water main from Quarter Path Road and connecting it to the water tower, which would provide water for the project. The sanitary sewer system for the bulk of the project is also going in, which is the red line here. It's taking by gravity down to an area down in a low spot where there is a pump station. And from that pump station, another main utility is a force main that takes, pumps the sewage back under 199 and ties it into sewer main on the other side of 199. And then the last major utility is the storm sewer and the, the water quality and water quality measures that are part of this plan. There's a, a major pond here, kind of in the entryway coming off Route 60, but it's basically the storm sewer that follows the roadways here with some BMPs. here with some BMPs along the way and taking it back to Quarter Path Road, so from Quarter Path Road to Route sixty. And that's kind of the summary of the utilities. If we go to the next slide, and the roadways that we're proposing to construct under the CDA is primarily Battery Boulevard, once again, starting where the road ends on Quarter Path Road, and bringing it all the way across the site and tying it in to Route sixty, including some improvements on Route sixty that were required by VDOT. There's a small portion of this loop road that loops through the ED District, just this blue part right here from this intersection down here, and this is primarily to open the project up and serve the hospital in that location. So those are the roadways that are proposed in the CDA. And then if we go to the next slide, an important part of this project that we feel that's going to help make it the upscale project and kind of a great project in Williamsburg is the recreational amenities that are being added. And we basically have a trail, a multi-use trail, that would go from Quarter Path Road, come along Battery Boulevard for a portion, but whenever possible, come up and go along the more dramatic topography of the site. The site has a lot of ravines that are quite beautiful, and we'd like to get people in proximity to that to take advantage of those views. Basically, the trail, once again, goes from Quarter Path Road, works its way through the project, and goes through Route sixty. Couple of additional things, is we have a couple of small pocket parks, taking advantage of topography along the trail, so as people go along the trail, there's a place for them to stop and kind of take a break and enjoy themselves. And also, we have a village square proposed in the middle of the project that would have a strong connection to the trail system. So those are the recreational amenities that would be part of the CDA bonds. That's, that's a basic summary of what we're proposing to do in this phase, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has on these, on this infrastructure.
Right, thank, thank you very much for that. Anybody have questions?
Just a quick question, what's the timeline on completing this first phase?
The, we are supposed to come back to City Council, the plan is to come back in October. We have another CDA, there's a, the CDA, the authority itself, has to meet again and approve everything, which is scheduled for the end of September. And some of the improvements actually on here are already installed, some of them are approved already at the city, and we are starting the construction of them, and then the remainder are planned for this fall and next spring, but hopefully to be complete sometime next year.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I would just like to make a comment.
Yeah.
I'm particularly pleased by the multi-use path, I know that's not the term used, but the trail that runs along through the development, I think that's a really nice feature, and commend you for incorporating that.
Now you can run twelve miles instead of ten miles.
We believe it's going to be a major feature to attract people to the project.
Do you yet know what the surface will be like?
We've been talking about it, and quite frankly, it might have different surfaces in different areas, when it's along the road, it's more likely to be asphalt, but as it gets back into areas closer to the ravines, it may become something softer and more to advocate walking instead of bicycles or rollerblades.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? This doesn't require any action from City Council, but this is, and we anticipate then that they will be back at our October meeting with a proposal for financing.
Exactly.
Okay, great. If it's okay with council, I would also like to change the agenda a bit and move the award of contract to banking services to discuss right now, since Mr. Burris has been here for some time, and I don't think he anticipated spending quite this much time here when he came, but thank, thank you for your patience, but if it's acceptable to council, we could do that, Jack.
Yes, Mr. Sarah will give the report.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of council. The current contract with SunTrust Bank for citywide banking services expires September thirtieth of this year, so staff's been working on soliciting proposals over the past six weeks or so. We held a pre-proposal conference with representatives from nine area banks on July seventeenth. We had the criteria for the evaluation for the proposals essentially included the overall qualifications and experience of the banks, and their service teams, the cost of services, implementation schedule, and products. Staff summarized contents of the proposals and reported to the Finance and Audit Committee on August seventeenth. That committee is made up of Mayor Holman, his chair, Gwen Williams, and Bob Taylor. The committee, the committee is recommending that a new five-year contract be negotiated with SunTrust Bank with five optional one-year renewals, so a new contract would be further negotiated over the next few weeks and in place by October first. SunTrust is being recommended because of its continued excellent service and support to the city. The service team will remain unchanged, and overall pricing remains competitive with the market. Pricing will also be reduced about thirteen hundred dollars per year from the current levels. And Dave Burris, as you said, has been waiting in the back there, and he's certainly here to answer any questions you may have, as I will also.
Thank you very much, Phil. Does anyone have any questions for Phil? As a member of the committee, we, I want to compliment staff on the fine work it did. It made it easy for us to compare apples and oranges and come up with a solution, and we very much appreciate that, and I think the committee unanimously felt that the recommendation made by staff was certainly the way to go. Thank you. Any questions? What action does this require, Jack?
There is a motion proposed in the memo.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council authorize execution of a five-year contract with five additional one-year renewals for banking services with SunTrust Bank and a form satisfactory to the city attorney. Second?
I have a motion and a second, would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Fryling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
David, thank, thank you very much for your patience, we really appreciate that. With those two city manager reports done, we can return to our public hearings, and we have a third public hearing, and this is local adoption of regional water supply plan, proposed resolution eleven dash twelve.
Yes, before we use today, we have a public hearing on the Hampton Roads Regional Water Supply Plan, which is a pretty thick booklet here, but you can see from my notes here that I've got about maybe ten pages in here that refer to Williamsburg, but this is a large, a large region that the study was done for. It was prepared by the staff at the Plan District Commission, and it's required by law and in accordance with the State Water Control Board regulations. And the plan covers ten, like I said, ten cities are included, six counties, and eleven towns, that's why the book's so big. They've organized plans by three subregions, the peninsula subregion, which is, Williamsburg's in that, of course, the south side, and the western tidewater regions. The plan addresses several facets of water supply, including what are the existing sources of supply, like rivers, reservoirs, groundwater, the existing water demands, which they got from most of the localities and the major institutions and industry, projected water demands, which follow mostly, primarily based on water, I mean, population projections, and what's being done in terms of water demand management, including conservation efforts such as public education, retrofit kits, and of course, one of the most important things was the, the building code regulations were changed back in the ninety-three timeframe, requiring low-flow fixtures. Then based on all the existing supplies versus all the projected demands of the regions, the study developed a statement of need for each subregion. For our subregion, the peninsula subregion, the study concluded that as a whole, our region has adequate supplies through year twenty forty, with a small deficit in the twenty forty to twenty fifty period. The other two subregions, south side and western tidewater, have supplies adequate to meet demands through twenty fifty. The final chapter of the plan looks at the, at general alternatives to both either increase the water supply or decrease the water demand. There wasn't a lot of detailed analysis on the future of the water service, only to say that the reservoir, the construction reservoir, which is probably not going to be likely, that desal of either groundwater or surface water could be a possibility, and they dealt a little bit with the cost issue there, that it's more expensive on a desal. And finally, they did mention the possibility of interconnecting the south side, which will have, has a little bit of under, overabundance of water supply to the north side, to our side, but very little work's been done in that regard, but that was mentioned. I can either answer questions now from council or wait till after the public hearing, we are required to submit any written comments that are given at the public hearing in our response to those written comments. And all this information will be supplied to the Hampton Roads Plan District Commission, all the cities and towns, each jurisdiction's going through the same process, and we're giving all of our information to the HRPDC, and they're going to submit the information to the State Water Control Board.
Does anyone have questions for Dan before we go to the public hearing? If not, thank you very much, Dan, I really appreciate that. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to the issue to please come forward. Please state your name and address. Give you a speaker's card. Yeah, give it, thank you, thank you.
My name is Kelly Place, I'm actually a Williamsburg water customer, I was born here, and I do live in York County though right now. I'm trying to figure out, I see that doesn't extend up. My back won't let me bend over to... I became aware somewhat less than a month ago of the water supply plan, and I've spent a fair amount of time looking through different sections of it, and while I find certain things that I think are to be commended in the water plan, especially with regard to the section on alternatives and other things like that, what disturbs me is that looking through the water plan, most of the projections are based on data up to two thousand and seven or before. I haven't been involved with the King William Reservoir, as you guys know, that was two years before the reservoir was ruled invalid by the federal courts, and the projections that they're going on haven't been changed to reflect what the actual numbers were. I'm disturbed that, for example, land use, they're not looking at land use essentially, and they did the same thing with the reservoir, and I do blame collectively the HRPDC. I don't know why they do some of the things they do collectively, individuals like Mr. Holman, I like and trust many individuals, but collectively, I don't trust the body. They were instrumental in putting us through the twenty years or so of the King William Reservoir because of their projections, which were very flawed, and they never corrected them. Many of those projections are still contained in the HRPDC water plan today. For example, just looking a few minutes ago at certain parts of this, I noticed that, I guess they're using two thousand and seven numbers, and I think they're overestimating those, they suggest that the Newport News Water Works system, which is the prime supplier here on the peninsula, had an average daily use of fifty-one point six three million gallons a day. If you guys have been looking at Water Works' recent projections, much as we had for fifteen years suggested, last year, I think it was forty point oh two million gallons a day, not fifty-one point six three, which they have as current, that's over eleven million gallons a day that they're, that they claim was used in two thousand and seven, which would subsequently increase, but it hasn't, it's significantly decreased. The usage from Water Works last year was thirty-nine point six or thirty-nine point seven million gallons a day. If you juxtapose what the actual water use is with the projections they made as far back as, say, nineteen ninety-four in the draft environmental impact statement for the King William Reservoir, the Daily Press had reported in August of two thousand and nine that the draft, the DEIS, had projected sixty-eight million gallons a day that Newport News would have as their daily demand, that was in nineteen ninety-four. That was by two thousand and ten, they'd be using sixty-eight million gallons a day. But now we see the last two years, they're using an average of, let's say, forty million gallons a day. Now, the King William Reservoir was permitted for twenty million gallons a day, and what that means is that their projections were so far off, and I bring up this old stuff because these, some of these same projections are in this water supply plan, it was so far off that by two thousand and ten, we actually had one and a half King William Reservoir permitted yields in our pocket here on the peninsula. They were almost thirty million gallons off with a permitted yield of twenty million gallons. So not only was that project not needed, but their projections are so far off, and one thing I want to mention why the projections were off, and there are many reasons, was one was just brought up a minute ago, about the federal standards for new construction, whether it's low-flow toilets, washers, faucets, things like that. It was nineteen ninety-seven that the new standards for all new toilets, not to mention all the old houses that are retrofitted to safe water, but that the toilets, the faucets, and several other things were put into federal law, all new construction has to have it, and you can calculate over time how many old houses will retrofit their, their facilities with that. A toilet lasts fifty years, federal, federal standards. The, the water supply plan suggests that we're topping out on these conservation levels that we'll realize, where we save more water as each per capita use is diminished. So I think to claim that in this short period of time through which you can predict the old toilets will be phased out, to predict that there won't be more conservation savings from those is erroneous. It was two thousand and seven where the new washing machine standards came in, a washing machine lasts fourteen years. So for them to not take into account the fifty-eight gallons a day per capita that's saved by the new washing machines, and to assume that the per capita use of water will remain static is also erroneous. So I take exception to, and I'm sticking with the peninsula subregion because that's what concerns us, I haven't really looked at the south side or the western tidewater, but I take exception to that. Also, looking on page twelve of Appendix A, the number of populations served by Newport News Water Works, they say is four hundred and ten thousand, that was two thousand and seven. Last I saw was closer to four hundred and five thousand. Give them four hundred and ten thousand, but the number of connections they claim in two thousand and seven was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, yet just a couple weeks ago, Newport News Water Works had a press release out that said they had a hundred and twenty-two thousand connections, not a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So there are a whole myriad of incongruities like that in there, where I think that they've either, and despite the commendable things, I do want to say there are commendable things in here, and I'm not against planning for the future, and I'm certainly not against regional planning, but I question why they're, why, after the fiasco at the King William Reservoir and all the tens of millions of dollars that have evaporated, I question why they haven't redone some of their projections and their methodologies, in fact, they're using the same predictions, projections and the same methodologies. You may remember Dr. Don Phillips, one of the people who had done his own water supply plan projections, and he turned out, compared to the Corps of Engineers, EPA, Newport News, and all the other wise people that did water projections, his turned out to be correct, and theirs turned out to be dramatically erroneous. I was reading something that he had written some years ago, and he mentioned it again, he mentioned that not only did they not calculate land use and what it would be when determining these projected water usages, but they essentially overlaid what I, I guess he called it a developer's wish list, they essentially overlaid what these rosy projections of new development would be over time, but what they failed to do was consider that wetlands, and ravines, and parks, and median strips, and existing businesses that were already in a location that was scheduled to be developed with a new business because they hadn't looked to see what was already there. That type of thing is also significantly responsible for the level of error in these, and I'm not going to hit you with a whole bunch of specifics because you don't need to hear that. My main concern is how much of this mandates action from Williamsburg or James City. I went over to the James City community meeting they had, and that was pretty illustrative, but we basically had the same kind of concerns. I looked at their population projections, and for some reason, mysteriously, I think it was the twenty thirty to twenty forty timeframe, it was twenty twenty to twenty forty, for some reason, they had an inexplicable increase in the increased percentage of population. And why they can project that over each ten-year period, they would go from, say, eighteen to twenty percent increase in population, and then that one ten-year period in the far out years, all of a sudden it goes... of a sudden it goes up to 28 to 25 to 28% increase in population, at the very same time as some of the relevant localities are approaching buildout, doesn't really add up. So I just wanted you to be cautious. I'm not speaking against the plan per se, but I'm speaking against any mandates that the localities will have to comply with that are in this plan. I think the HRPDC, frankly, I think they should hire Don Phillips to drown truth some of their data because some of it, frankly, like I look at one thing just a minute ago on existing resources. They mentioned the existing, I'm a waterman, they mentioned the existing fisheries that are in the rivers that potentially could be tapped for water uses here on the peninsula. They leave out one of the most important megafauna in the river, and I know this because I wrote a grant proposal in 2005, which is going on to this date, on Atlantic sturgeon, which are in all the tidal reaches of these rivers, and they're proposed for the endangered species list, whether or not they're accepted, and I sort of hope they aren't, but whether or not they're accepted or not, it is a key part of the ecosystems of these rivers, and if anyone were to want to tap these rivers, it would be a key thing that they would have to mitigate for with DEQ or EPA, yet they mention they don't mention that those that particular species even exists. They mention shad, herring, striped bass, things like that, but they don't even mention this one species, which is a very important species and could easily negate any efforts to use the waters that it exists in. And I hope that's not the case. Let me just wind this up by mentioning, one thing they did mention here was the International Paper, and this goes to the amount of water supply that would be available to this region. As you know, a lot of our groundwater comes from the coastal water plain. As you probably know also, International Paper closed their plant down in Franklin, that was about 36, 35, 40 million gallons a day of groundwater. Something that you might want to know, when you close a plant that takes that much groundwater out, the rebound in the aquifer is tremendous. And I give as an example, in 2004, the Durango Paper Plant that used about the same amount, 36 million gallons a day, as the Franklin Plant, it closed in the St. Johns River between Georgia and Florida. And when it closed, in a short period of time, the aquifer under the plant rose 141 feet, and springs started to flow in all sorts of places that hadn't flowed for generations since that paper plant had been in operation, including on Cumberland Island, Georgia, 40 miles off the coast. So I think that when they mention that, which is a key component of our groundwater, which is a key component of the water plan, when they mention that the closure of that plant, they do mention they don't know whether it'll be reopened and use the same water permit, but I think it's important to note that that is a massive increase in the potential supply that they're assuming isn't there. Consequently, when I look at the projections of the statement of need for the peninsula that, and they mentioned that by 2050, there'll be about a 6 million gallon a day shortfall on the peninsula, that's the mid-level bounds, they have upper and lower ranges too, I'm concerned that to project that shortage in 2050, when they're already ignoring supply far in excess of that, that they're not counting in here, renders the whole plan somewhat moot. Lord, I've got a lot of other things. I know I've gone over my time. I'll leave it at that. Didn't know I'd be spending my whole afternoon here with you all. But I do want you all to be, I'm just sort of flabbergasted that 2007 is when most of this data goes to. And so it's predicated on things that were proved erroneous over the last few years, largely. And I would go on about certain things have been cherry picked and other things have been ignored, but it wouldn't bother me except for that it might result in mandates on the different localities. And speaking of the law that caused this to be done, I think it was passed in probably 2002, maybe 2001, because I got active in the Virginia Assembly a little bit at that time and a bunch of subsequent years where there was all this King William Reservoir and other water-related legislation in the legislature, you should know the law that mandated the HRPDC come up with this regional water supply plan was basically spearheaded by the people that were pushing the King William Reservoir. And even though they claimed they wouldn't, they, once they got that law through the General Assembly, they then used it to justify their project, which was, and that led to massive expenditures with very little beneficial results to the people of the area. So I just want you all to make sure, I noticed that there are provisions in the plan, I haven't read all of it, like all the appendices, but I did notice that there are provisions over, I think, four, five, or 10-year timeframes that it could be redone, what you submit to DEQ and the State Water Control Board. And I suggest that that almost needs to be done right away, that a lot of these need to be recalculated, if nothing else. Instead of using these 2007 figures, a quick phone call to the water utilities around here to find out what the actual use was would have been beneficial, because right now, they have basically around 28% extra water being used by Newport News Water Works than what they're actually using now, and that is almost twice what our projected deficit would be in 2050. That's how far off it is. And so I'm concerned about that, and I've got a lot of other concerns. I'll approach you if it's appropriate in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Kelly. Appreciate that. Dan, as you said, this, his remarks will be part of our report on this.
If Kelly would put those remarks in writing, we'll respond to those in writing as well.
Okay.
And those answers and his questions will go with our schedule.
Okay, great.
Dan, can I ask, was the public hearing still?
Sorry, yeah.
I'll come back after.
Let me, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to counsel for.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Mr. Place referenced the possibility of Williamsburg being mandated to do certain things based upon those projections. What can you tell us about?
I don't have the same opinion on that. You know, they're saying, we're saying our water supply, the plan's saying our water supply for this whole region is adequate till 2040, and that, well, he's right, he's correct that the deficit that's mentioned in the report is 6 million gallons per day somewhere in the 2040, 2050 timeframe.
Okay.
So I don't see us having to do anything.
Okay, thank you.
Based on this report.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take an action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve, I'd like to move that we approve, propose Resolution 1112 approving the HRPDC regional water supply plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Great. Okay, that brings us to our next order of business, which is reports, monthly financial statements. Jack, is there anything?
Nothing.
What about the department operating reports, anything like?
Well, I was going to take a few minutes and do a hurricane debris, but I think maybe the time has passed for that, so I'll send you my notes.
Okay. And I hope you will convey council's appreciation to all the staff for the terrific job they did during the hurricane.
Very much so. Thank you very much.
This was a, I mean, job, yeah, this was just a terrific effort by everyone on the city staff, and I think the lessons learned from Isabel were implemented. I think we learned a few more lessons, so if we ever get to do this again, we'll do it even better. But I hope you'll convey that to all of us staff, that how much we appreciate that.
One thing I would like to do and ask Dan, just looking forward to debris removal because we've gotten word now that we are going to get some FEMA funding through the state, and so Dan, how about telling us how we're going to pick the trash up?
Just briefly, as you know, during the storm, we had folks out in the storm and pretty much clearing the roads and whatnot for the first two days, got that all cleaned up, and then our crews last for the remainder of last week, we went out and picked all that stuff up off the streets and whatnot. We haven't gotten to the neighborhoods yet. We started this week in the neighborhoods with our people. Like Jack said, we did get approval for the funding, so we're going to institute or activate, we have an existing standing contract with one of the big debris people that do this work. They're also working for James City County and York County, so they're already in the area. So we're going to be working with those files. They're supposed to start. We've been doing a lot of preliminary work this week, getting that thing lined up, and then we start tomorrow in the neighborhoods, and they'll have a little bigger equipment and a little more prepared than we could do it, maybe, it's quite much stuff, but this will be much quicker and faster, and then they're prepared. So we're going to use those folks, and like I said, starting tomorrow. And their best estimation, they did ride around with our people, and their best estimation would be as short as two or three weeks they should get everything up, so that's not bad.
Well, thank you, and again, I hope you'll convey our appreciation to all of your department staff for what they did, and I hope Chief Dan and Chief Sloggy, I hope you'll do the same, because all I've heard from residents is praise for Public Works, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the rest of the city, and you deserve a lot of credit for a job well done.
Can I add?
Yeah.
Just a specific points to that. I heard, I personally appreciated receiving and heard a lot of people comment on the email communications that were regularly coming out from the city, even when some of the material coming out might not have, I mean, it was all interesting, but it might not have been changing significantly from hour to hour. It was reassuring for people to know what was going on when you had no power, you couldn't, you know, no television, no internet connection, but if you had a smartphone of some sort, at least you're getting that communication. If all you had was a battery-operated radio, you were still getting the information through WMBG where Mr. Granger was passing along regularly. When you have no idea what else is going on in the world, those little pieces of contact are some.
Had I given my report, I would have told you there were 29 of those notices, and then they went out in all those different media, and so, yeah.
And even staff posting them on Facebook and other places.
That's our social media effort has paid off in times of things. And finally, the CERT team, both before, because many of those CERT members checked on elderly residents and disabled residents in their neighborhoods, and it just provided a level of assurance for those individuals and for others in the neighborhood that somebody was there if they needed it. So again, I hope you'll let the CERT teams know how much we appreciate that. With that, we'll move to city attorney reports. Christine, you've been waiting for a while, so you have a few.
Well, hopefully, these will all move very quickly. These are the house, beginning of the housekeeping measures that we talked about in July due to the changes in the state code. The first is Proposed Ordinance 1115, which removes the prohibition from the city code regarding the use of air guns, BB guns, and gravel shooters, which I understand are slingshots to my generation.
I wondered what that is.
Yes.
Not a new toy.
The code changed such that localities could no, can no longer prohibit shooting pneumatic guns within its jurisdiction, but there are some limitations on that, so reasonable care has to be taken. You can shoot it on your own property. The code does not define reasonable care, so we've tried to do that with some examples with the rebuttable presumption that if a paintball or whatever, a BB, or rocks from a slingshot cross the property line, then the person who shot them has not taken reasonable care. But that is a rebuttable presumption, so we've tried to give some examples of things that would be reasonable care within the proposed ordinance in front of you. Certainly have discussed this with Chief Sloggy, so he can answer whatever questions you have regarding pneumatic guns, and the staff recommendation is that council adopt the proposed ordinance.
Are there any questions for Chris or?
I was going to do a little rant about the Dillon Rule, but we're all too tired, so if I could do one.
Mr. Mayor, Dr. Prey, Ms. Newtonson's rant, but I move that city council adopt Proposed Ordinance 11-15.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
The second matter, the second ordinance is signage requirements for taxi cabs. Those standards have changed in the state code. This is mandatory. Taxis now have to provide a sign and certain specific markings on them, so that is the language that has been proposed in the ordinance that's in front of you, and the recommendation is that council adopt that.
Are there any questions for Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Proposed Ordinance 11-16.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
And the last matter for today is a bad check fee increase from $35 to $50. This is not mandatory. Council does not have to do this if council chooses not to. The Proposed Ordinance also includes some language regarding bad faith stop payment orders being included in bad checks for purposes of the fee.
Does anybody have any questions for?
Is this in response to particular incidents or repeated incidences?
Well, we certainly have instances, I think if you checked with, talked to Phil, of bad checks or stop payments that come through the city fairly often, so we certainly do have this. It's certainly up to council to set what that fee is going to be.
When was the $30 fee set? Do you know?
I don't know.
Phil, do you? It's been, it's been there for a very long time, so part of it might be.
Could I ask Mr. Sarah a question?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how many, what the ratio is between well-intentioned acts that went awry and not-so-well-intentioned acts that went as planned that created problems?
I don't understand.
Good faith, bad faith efforts, people who, you know.
There is no way of telling. The only thing we know is we get about five or six bad checks a month.
A month?
On average, something in that neighborhood.
Obviously, SunTrust charges a fee when you, the recipient, has somebody give you a bad check. What is that fee?
Goes against our analysis. I would have to look that up. I believe it's about $10, and it's charged against our analysis, which ultimately we pay for.
Sure.
There's also staff time in trying to collect on these, so I mean, there's some internal costs that are not actual dollar costs, but that are certainly resource costs.
Any further questions, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of Proposed Ordinance 11-17.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
No.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Next order of business is unfinished business. I don't think we have any, is that correct? No, new business. That brings us to the.
Don't we have new business?
We do have new business, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I move that effective September 8, 2011, city council appoint James Axtell to the library board for a term to expire on June 30, 2013.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
No.
Mayor Holman?
I'm sorry. I'm used to that.
You want to roll, Dr.? Keep it going.
Is that called a reflex? Aye.
Enthusiastically.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Sorry. That brings us to our final order of business for our open session today, which is open forum. Anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. If you please come forward and state your name and address. Mr. Smith?
Victor Smith, again, 140 Chandler Court. This evening of the hurricane, I was up almost all night like a lot of people were, and I went out about 12:30, and I noticed that one of our wonderful police ladies was out there taping blockages from the street, Griffin. And since I needed to go to another place, I went around that and found that there was some blockage on South Boundary, and that had already been taped. Somebody really worked hard, got up out at 5 o'clock in the morning, and by the 5 o'clock in the morning, the streets were cleared of that debris, so your folks were doing a great job. Thank you very much. Secondly, a little history. The first, to my knowledge, the first suburb of Williamsburg was Chandler Court Pollard Park. That was created by Governor, not then, but subsequently Governor Pollard, who was elected in 1930, the governor of Virginia, had also been mayor of Williamsburg, found that there wasn't any place for him to live. He tried to rent, and then he tried to do some other things, and so he discovered that this property could be pulled back into the, into one thing, that he asked the city to vacate all the issues except along Jamestown Road, and he redeveloped that. He did that basically by himself. That's been subsequently validated by the State Supreme Court when we had to go to court over some things that the city didn't, in our opinion, do right, and they were going to do some in-building. I guess the reason I was thinking of this is because of all of the issues with housing and whatnot. This has been going on for a long time in this college town. His solution was to include restrictions on the quality of the house, he had a price under girding that required at least such amount of money to be spent on the house. He had setbacks for the garages, any garages that were to be made were supposed to be set way back so that, so that people were not visibly parking all over the front bonds or the, or even the streets, and there were a number of these things. So when we're looking at these issues, I think it's helpful to recognize, number one, that they've been around a long time, and that there are solutions that, that are neighborhood-friendly and neighborhood-helpful and, and quality of life helpful and quality of, of environment helpful, that, that can be imposed, and I appreciate not changing it precipitously, I understand that there could be things that could be made better. When he was mayor of Williamsburg, my understanding was that he was the person who basically started the concept of a, of a planning department. If it was not exactly instituted at that point, he did that. He started the sewer system, which leads me back to, to water infrastructure, you know, stormwater management, which isn't a concern. But I think that those traditions need to be looked at and understood because they form, they form the foundation of why Williamsburg is such a wonderful place to live, and I thank you for your service on this, on this council. It's a job that I don't think I'd want to run for, thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor. Would anyone have a slight to address? Mr. Keen?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm John Keen from 718 Jamestown Road. I'm not going to say a word about the four-person, the four-room rentals. Good. I am here, though, I was talking to Dan Barta, the athletic director at Lafayette High School, good a month and a half, two months ago, and I was talking about how, I, I was curious, War Hill High School girls softball has their own field, as does Jamestown High School, as does Bruton High School, but Lafayette girls softball, my daughter managed to play softball now for, going on four years now, they play at the James City County Rec Center, because I guess in the old days when they built Lafayette, they didn't build any suitable playing fields that could house actually league games back there. I guess there's, there's forms of practice fields and such, but nothing that could actually, that the league would allow them to play on. And watching them manage over the last couple of years, I noticed that the rec center is really abysmal. I mean, we, they play our games there, we can't charge admission to the games as all the older high schools do, and that money is not, not that it's big money, but it goes to the booster clubs, and it supplements the team. They can, they can maybe buy extra sweatshirts, they can buy some equipment that's mainly needed once in a while, $3, $5, I think War Hill charges $5 a game, and those are county facilities, you would think, well, they can charge it, why can't we at the rec center? But past that, what Barta, what Dan Barta had said to me, he said, we would love to use Kiwanis Field as our home field, as Lafayette's home field. Lafayette is a city school, it's where all our city kids go, it's our high school, that's where we, and kids love it. But they were told by the, I guess by the city rec department, that no, Kiwanis is off-limits city, our high school, they, it's just for recreation softball and Williamsburg star softball, which is made up of half of non-Williamsburg residents, actually. My question to you is, why can't we have our own field? I mean, why, why can't we play at Kiwanis, for instance, league games, if not, maybe just not practicable league games there? At the same time, if we can't play at Kiwanis, the county now is ripping apart the fields at Mid County, they're taking away both baseball fields in Mid County. I think Dan will attest, there's not, there's not one quality baseball field, 90-foot regulation baseball field that a city of Williamsburg could complain on within the city of Williamsburg. I mean, not that that was, but at least it was close to the city where we could access it. Now Lafayette is, is basically playing their games, the boys are playing their games at the War Hill Sports Complex at the field number five, which is almost right behind Lafayette High School, little path through the woods you can get there, and there's actually a walking trail around that is easily accessible even closer to that. Well, if the girls can't play at Kiwanis, and they can't, they're not going to upgrade the rec center in any form or fashion to the point where even allowing the dugouts to be expanded where they can have some shade, for instance, out of the sun, or get out of the rain in case it does start to rain on them, the girls can't literally put their equipment in the dugouts because they can't fit back and forth in them, so it's sitting out in the dirt and in the dust. Well, they, if, why not, why not at least have someone get in touch with the, the county officials and say, how about we build a field out next to the boys' field at War Hill? I mean, I've talked to, you know, plenty of people on county, and they said, yeah, there's money for that, but apparently it has to come from somebody here to say, you know, what about those city girls? I mean, I, it's, I don't think it's, you don't lose, and you know, it's, it's kind of a fun issue to get involved with, I think, in some reform or fashion, I mean, I can't believe that one of you guys wouldn't, like, you know, have a little bit of weight and freeing up some of that money, and at the same time, spending some of our excess cash. That business is like the White House throwing to the city on every Monday. I appreciate it, thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much, Ms. Keen, and we will, I will check with staff, and we will be back in touch with you about possibilities. Thank you very much for that. Anyone else wish to address city council on any matter? If not, I think that brings us to the end of our open session. Paul, do you?
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing two legal matters per subpar paragraph seven, for the purpose of consultation on specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by council.
Second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
We will take a break, I wish you.